Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, February 22, 2022, 5:31 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference. Pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 in Government Code Section 54953, this meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Cable Channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 and Government Code Section 54953, and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. And if I could ask the clerk to establish a quorum, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis. Here. Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Heller.
Here.
And Councilmember Barton, I don't believe has joined us quite yet, and Mayor Heding.
Present. So we do have a quorum, and I will call the meeting to order. And given the significant unrest going on in our world today, we'll just ask that if we could all, in our own way, take a moment of silence and remember those in harm's way. Thank you. Thank you. That brings us to our pledge of allegiance. If we could have our flag, we'll go ahead and do our pledge of allegiance this evening. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I'll ask our city attorney, Mr. Newmeyer, do we have a closed session report, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report.
Thank you, Chris. That brings us to council member reports. And let's go ahead and start with Councilmember Ford. Anything for your report this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a few things to report on. First, I would like to wish my daughter Alexa a very happy 20th birthday today. Sorry, I'm not with you right now, but she knows this is important work, so is understanding. And I have a few other announcements as well. Diablo Canyon Decommissioning Engagement Panel, they're currently seeking for new panel, they're seeking new panel members who represent diverse viewpoints. Through March 8 is the application period. And if you are interested in finding out more about becoming a panel member and to apply, please go to diablocanyonpanel.org for more information. Another announcement, I'm excited, we have the Slow Cal Open that will be taking place here in Morro Bay for the fourth time. It will take, it'll start on Thursday, this Thursday, February 24. It will go through the 27th. It's a, in case you're not familiar with what I'm talking about, it's a men's and women's World Surf League professional surf contest. It's really, really neat. You go out to the Rock, you can watch it. And it's just really, it's a, it's a really a wonderful event. So I hope that if you have the time, you know, make it by. And we have some locals participating as well this year. So, and my last announcement is, you know, I've, I, we've gotten some correspondence from some folks. And I've listened, you know, talked to people in person about frustrations, you know, everything being on Zoom, being online, not having that face-to-face personal interaction. And as your council member, I, you know, even with the obstacles that we have that keep us from being in person, no matter, you know, just whatever our decision is this evening, I would like to take it upon myself to meet with anyone who's interested in person. I am going to start doing coffee chats. And, and I think it's just a great way. I will be at various businesses around town, spreading the love to all the businesses in town that I can. And I would love to have anyone who's out there who's listening and tell your friends as well, if they'd like to join me, if they have concerns, questions, if I don't know the answers, I will get them for you if I can. And I just would love to meet you or say hello again if I, if we already know each other. The first one that I'm going to be doing will take place at the Rock Espresso Bar, which is located at 275 Morro Bay Boulevard. And I'm going to hold it on February 28, which is this Monday, at 11 o'clock AM. I will be trying to move those times around as well to make it more accommodating so that our working folks can also meet with me at some point as well. So, yeah, I just wanted to let everyone know, I would love to meet you face-to-face in an outdoor setting. And I will be in the back space area of the Rock Espresso Bar. You can find me back there. So that is it for my announcements. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Ford. And I assume you're buying the coffee, is that?
I don't know if I'm allowed to do that. I think I'd have to check with her.
Just a joke, just a joke. Councilmember Barton, any announcements this evening? See if I can find her. She might be muted. There you go.
Okay, great. I found a large truck in my neighborhood this afternoon loaded with all the materials for resurfacing the drinking water tanks on Kings. And so I know that that progress, that, that project is going to be moving forward because now the materials are there. So I was excited to, to know that.
Good deal. Thank you for sharing. And Councilmember Addis, any announcements? Dawn, we can't hear you.
Um, okay. How about now?
Great.
Wanted to make sure the public is invited to the Women's Merch San Luis Obispo Engage for Equity Rally on March 5 at Mitchell Park from 1 to 3 PM. We have a huge lineup of speakers that includes students from Paso Robles High School, representatives from Gaila, the mayor of San Luis Obispo. Diane Sousa will be back with poetry and much, much more. You can visit the Call to Action Alley starting at noon. And that is an area where a number of nonprofits come from across San Luis Obispo County to ask for volunteers to share their mission and what they do. So the public is invited, it's a free event. And we look forward to seeing you March 5, Mitchell Park, 1 to 3 PM, or come early at noon to visit the Call to Action Alley.
Great, and thank you for that. Councilmember Heller, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. For those of you who haven't heard, the Morro Bay Trash Company Annual Cleanup Week is next week. And what this means for residential customers only, sorry to say, you can leave trash bags, up to six 32-gallon bags, not weighing more than 75 pounds each or longer than four feet. You can put out alongside your trash cans, and they will be picked up on your regular trash day with your regular trash cans. Now, I just want to be clear, what you put in these cans is basically what you would put in your regular trash can or your gray trash can. This is not for recyclable materials or for organic green waste. So this is a great opportunity, no extra cost. Six, up to six 32-gallon bags, not more than 70 pound, 75 pounds each, which is pretty heavy and not longer than four feet. So just put it out on your regular trash day next week. So this goes from February 28 through March 4. Secondly, to add to the Coffee with a Councilmember theme, I wish I was egalitarian as much as you are, Councilmember Ford, but I'm kind of an addict at Buttercup Bakery. And that's, that's why I will be meeting people if they're interested. Send me a text or a phone, make a phone call, and I'll be happy to meet you just about any morning of the week. Lastly, I'd like to thank John Martin for his many years of service on the CFAC. He recently resigned after making a significant contribution, and I wanted to thank him publicly for that. I also wanted to thank Tina Wiener for her time on the CFAC. For personal reasons, she's had to step down, but she's enjoyed her time there and was a very clear-minded contributing voice, I thought. So thank you, Tina, for that. Yeah, those are my announcements tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. And to piggyback on those important committees, the City of Morro Bay is currently recruiting for several of our advisory bodies. The application deadline is February 25 by 5 PM. The available vacancies include the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. There's one vacancy there. Our Harvard Advisory Board, there is a vacancy on that board as well. And then the Parks and Recreation Commission, we have two positions available there. So if you are interested, you can contact Dana Swanson at the city, and she can send you an application for any of those positions. Again, the deadline is Friday, February 25 by 5 PM. And we're just looking for any of our great community members that are out there that would like to step forward and participate on one of our advisory boards. Mr. Collins, do you have a report this evening, sir?
I'll report this evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate that. And that brings us to public comment. This is general public comment for items that are not on the agenda or items that are on the agenda for which you cannot stay and you'd like to speak now. Again, a general public comment is now open. And James, do we have public comments, sir?
We do. First hand that I saw raised was from Don Maruska.
Okay. Welcome, Don.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Don Maruska. My office is here in Morro Bay for the last 28 years. And I want to talk with you a little bit more about C3. I had submitted comments about that, and I wanted to elaborate a bit. In that there's a great opportunity in addressing the pressing issues of climate change to engage our citizens and businesses in this endeavor. The short-term goals that you've identified in your Goals for the Year Around Climate Action are great things. They're things that are city-centric in nature, and that's appropriate for your own goals. But there's a huge opportunity for the council to act as a convener of community interest in this topic. We've got a great example of that when we were doing in the city the Local Economic Action Program, LEAP, as you may recall it from a few years back. A lot of very positive initiatives came out of citizens' ideas and activities, some of which they fully executed on their own, some of which they pursued in conjunction with the city. So I would suggest a similar endeavor with regard to climate action. We need all hands on deck, and the city can be a great force multiplier with the citizenry and with the business community. And there's lots of interest, be it from EcoSlow, Rotary Clubs, Kiwanis, other service organizations, Morro Bay and Bloom, Sierra Club, The Chamber, et cetera, that we could be mobilizing for this effort. And it's truly a situation that needs all hands on deck. So I would encourage you to think about an opportunity to identify a couple of council members that have a passion for this topic and to sit down with staff. And I'd be willing to offer ideas in that discussion about how to scope an expeditious updating of the Climate Action Plan, how to find ways to engage the citizens in these efforts, even in post-COVID or current COVID times, and to explore some potential opportunities that could be pursued and the resources that are available to do that. I would highlight that I've had an opportunity to participate with the Slow Climate Coalition, which is working hand-in-glove with the City of Slow. And they have been very successful in attracting resources for tree planting programs that both beautify the city and provide for carbon sequestration and a host of other initiatives, micro, community collaboratives, et cetera. And we, of course, would create our own version here in Morro Bay of what's appropriate for our community and the residents and business interests here. But it's just illustrative of how this can be a magnet for attracting resources to the community. So it doesn't all fall on the city. And we can really leverage the interests and activities of our residents and businesses to help this important initiative. And I think it is an emergency. You know, it's not an acute case like somebody going into the hospital with a heart attack, but it is somebody, our climate is like somebody who is stuck in the ICU with a ventilator. You know, we're trying to breathe life back into our, our, our climate, which is suffering. And so we do need to give this special focus and attention. And I really encourage you to translate your resolution into action steps that we can all embrace in the community and help in accomplishing. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Don. James, next public comment, please.
Next hand raised, looks like it's from Betty Winholz.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Winholz. I wanted to compliment the notice scene that the South Bay Boulevard will be closed for another two months, that you announced that before the deadline, and that was really good timing. And I appreciate a heads-up before, rather than after the fact. I, I want to make a statement, and I hope you'll take it as an observation rather than a critique. This is the third piece of this project that's doubled its length. This was supposed to be two months. Now it's going to be four months. When the conveyance belt closed down the other side of Quintana, it was supposed to be so many weeks, and it ended up being so many months. Same thing's happened with the bike trail. It was going to be closed for a season, and now it's going to be closed for almost a year. So my concern, as someone who's paying these bills, is do we not have people who understand schedules and can give us accurate information from the beginning? Or is this just us being played and knowing, oh, they can deal with a bad situation for a few months, and then we'll tell them later, oh, it's really going to be longer? So in this situation, I'm, I'm concerned about what advice you're getting because all of these time periods seem to be doubled or extended rather than the initials ones. And, and I, we can say that for the cost of the plant as well. So I just want to express that concern, and thank you for the heads-up.
Thank you, Betty. James, next public comment, please.
Next hand raised is from Linda Winters.
Okay. Welcome, Linda.
Good evening. Nice to be back in action. Thank you, city council members and mayor and staff. It is Mobile Home Linda. And it's really hard to believe that in 16 more days, we will mark two years since our last in-person council meeting at the Vets Hall. On March 10, 2020, I was relaying the trauma of experiencing a statewide catastrophe flooding in 57 of our 58 counties. That was 25 years ago, March 10, 1995. Little did we know what was in store for us all. Just two days later, on March 10, 2020, pandemic. Everything that we considered normal was suspended. Some things were permanently canceled, closed down, locked out. You all know the details of our stories. We're here, two years later, trying to create a new normal. I feel like I am somewhat successful, aiming towards goals that I have been talking about for many years, trying to build a solid line of communication between the residents of our mobile home parks here in Morro Bay and the state and city agencies. I think the pandemic has taught us all just how much we need each other more than ever before. It's good to be allowed to gather safely in groups and know that we have the means to protect ourselves, our families and friends. This brings me to a request to council in the state. We need to be together in person again for our council meetings. You all know I attended every single meeting at the Vets Hall from start to finish, sitting on those torturously uncomfortable chairs. Guess I'm just a glutton for punishment. I need to regain that electric energy those, those meetings gave me. I need to give up the comfort of my easy chair at home while Zooming to regain my position as Mobile Home Linda. And I realize that you can't do anything about it until the permission is lifted from the state. But I just want to know how much I miss all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. James, next public comment, sir.
I see no raised hands, so you should be good to go.
Thank you. I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. And Ms. Winholz, I'll ask that your question regarding schedules and doubling times be addressed during the item on the WRF Quarterly Report. I'll make sure that I've got a note to make sure that that gets covered in the report tonight. Thank you for bringing that forward. And let's see, I believe that was it in terms of comments. With that, we'll go ahead and move to our consent agenda. These are items A1 through A6 tonight. This is the consent agenda. And I will go ahead and open up public comment for our consent items tonight. This is public comment for our consent agenda. And James, do we have any public comments, sir?
Got a hand raised from Betty Winholz.
Okay. Welcome back, Betty.
This is Betty Winholz again. I concur with Ms. Winters and the other written comments that you've received today, that it's, and it's, it's a bit, I'm trying to think of the word, if it's contradictory or just clashing, that we can go to a chamber dinner for celebrating, or we can go to church, or we can go into businesses, but we can't go into the Vets Hall. So, and I would just correct Ms. Winters in that it's my understanding that the governor has given permission to each government agency to choose whether they're ready to open up or not. And so I think that you do have the authority at this point to choose to do that and to meet us in person at the Vets Hall. Thank you. That was regarding to A6.
Thank you, Betty, appreciate that. James, next public comment, sir.
See no hands raised, so you should be good.
All right, I will go ahead and close public comment on the consent agenda. And either entertain a motion, or are there any items that any council member would like to pull? Oh, Councilmember Heller, sorry, I see your hand, yes.
Yes, thank you. Before I announce what I would like to pull, I got a text from a resident regarding trash pickup. Apparently, you can put out couches and chairs, but I'm not sure how many, so check with the trash company on that.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I was going to ask you about that, but thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, so there's, there's more to it than this, the six bags. I'd like to pull A6, Mayor.
Sure. Any other items to pull? If not, could we have a motion for approval of A1 through 5?
I'll have to approve 1 through 5, A1 through 5.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Addis, second by Councilmember Heller to approve A1 through A5. Any further discussion? Seeing no people jumping or raising hands, we'll go ahead and do a real call vote on those items.
Councilmember Addis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, sir, A6?
Yes, to echo some public comments, I, I think we are ready for open meetings again. Paso Robles has been doing it for a couple of months, I think. And I think we should either meet in Vets Hall or the Community Center, whichever is most feasible. I know today's the 22nd, but it seems to me we should be able to meet starting in the first, or at least the second meeting in March, if not sooner.
And I'll ask, I know there were some issues with testing by the county that I believe Mr. Collins was trying to work out. And maybe, Scott, can you give us an update on feasibility and possibility when we might be able to go back live?
Yes, if we want to maintain testing for the North County so they don't have to drive, I guess, the other, the other locations, we're trying to give them flexibility to do that through the end of March, which would allow us to convene these meetings in person and hybrid for the first meeting in April. We can't do a hybrid meeting in the Community Center. It's not set up for that. We had to buy specific technology to rewire our audio/video system in the Vets Hall to allow for both Zoom and in-person. So we wouldn't be able to bring that technology over to the Community Center, unfortunately. We could, you know, tell the county they need to get out sooner. That's certainly a direction that can be given by this council if you prefer to do that.
Yeah, thank you, Scott, for the, oh, Councilmember Heller, I didn't see.
I just wanted, Scott, would it be possible to do a non-hybrid meeting from the Community Center in March?
Certainly could, could talk to AGP about that. Then that brings into question just if there's other activities scheduled in the Community Center, so I'd have to work with Kirk's team on that.
So I'll, Councilmember Heller, did you have another question?
No, that's all I want to say.
Yeah, so I'll chime in and just say, I think we're all ready to get back in person. And not only our community members, but us as well. I think we miss each other. We miss the, the live interaction. And, and I believe we'd also increase our public comment if we were alive again. So, and I also understand the issue with, we're in a transition right now from a pandemic to an endemic situation. And testing has been extremely important to the county. And I know Mr. Collins and his staff are working hard to try to, to make sure we don't abruptly end the testing that occurs on Tuesday evenings too soon because I believe Morro Bay still gets utilized more than any other site from a testing standpoint. So I know staff's working hard to try to make it happen. I think we're all in agreement. We'd like to see it happen. But Scott, it looks like you want to make a comment.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, it's Monday through Friday that testing is provided. We can't, they can't remove their stuff because it creates contamination issues. So it's either do it or not at all. And so that's the challenge. And we understand the concerns raised by the community. And like I said, if council's desire is to get back sooner, we can ask that they leave sooner and maybe aim for the second meeting in March. But that will require some coordination with AGP as well to make sure they have enough time to run trial on the hybrid meeting approach.
From a clinical standpoint, thank you for that clarification, Scott. I would feel very uncomfortable and think that it would be a public health disservice to our community to stop testing abruptly now. And so that is an avenue I would not like to pursue at this time. And I think it's important to try to work with the county to try to get things changed over for April. But it is just, it's utilized so significantly that it would be a major disruption. So those are my comments. Councilmember Addis, yes. I'll take Councilmember Addis first, and then you.
Sure, go ahead, yes. Can't hear you, Don.
I can make it for Councilmember Heller.
Okay.
Okay, my thoughts are, I mean, I agree, we don't want to, we don't want to stop the, the testing at the Vet Center. But it seems to me, since the events that are scheduled in the Community Center are probably city events, I'd like to see those moved and that we have the meetings in March at the Community Center, even though it's not a hybrid situation. Would that be feasible?
I believe what the statement that Mr. Collins made is that he's evaluating that to try to determine if the schedule can be altered.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't be able to answer on, on the fly right now without consulting with Kirk on the schedule. And I don't know if it's, would be city events or anything scheduled for that matter. So it's just something I would be able, I wouldn't be able to tell you at the moment. And I also don't know if AGP would be able to make the move over to the Community Center. So those are factors we'd have to look into, but we could do that pretty quickly. So it's again up to the council how you want to approach that. I mean, our, our preference is to be able to provide a high I mean, our our preference is to be able to provide a hybrid hybrid setup for to start with. But if they, again, if the goal is to get in to person as soon as possible, we can see what's what's feasible. But I can't, I can't speak for AGP and Kirk at the moment.
Well, I guess that would be my preference, Mayor. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Addis, please.
I, well, I can't stand Zoom and for the record, I hate it. I hate standing here in my bedroom doing this. For a lot of reasons, and I had a phone call about this with a constituent who who wrote in and said, please come back in person. That said, I feel incredibly uncomfortable displacing either testing or community events to come back in person. I I think it for me, it would feel like cutting off our nose to spite our face. Kind of situation if people are back in person, having community events that they value at the community center. I don't see a situation where I would want to displace that to bring these meetings back in person, even though I really do not like being on Zoom and I very much miss being with everyone in person. But I I just don't have a good taste for displacing people in order to do that.
Thank you. And I'll just say, you may note that for every Zoom meeting, I'm down on the embarcadero right by the rock here in a beautiful setting. And so, no, I'm kidding. It's my background. I I think what I'm hearing is that we all desire to get back quickly. There are some logistical issues that are being evaluated. And personally, I'm going to support A six with the realization that we all want to get back as quickly as possible. And perhaps ask for a report back at the next meeting regarding the possibility of that happening. Understanding the the county issues and the issues at the community center. So I'll I'll move approval of A six.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Mayor Heding, second by Councilmember Barton for A six. Any further comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Great, thank you. That completes our consent agenda this evening.
Mayor, may I, Mayor, I'm sorry, may I interject for one minor clarification about the bulk item pickup?
You are who, sir?
This is Greg.
Greg?
Yes.
Public Works Director Greg, yes, sir.
I just want to make one minor clarification about the bulky item pickup. So what what Councilmember Heller stated initially was correct about the six bags. Bulky item pickup can be coordinated. The the customer would have to call Morro Bay Garbage in advance. It's not free, though, it would be at a discounted rate. So it's not like the other times of the year when it's it's free. This would be at a discounted rate. Just wanted to get that out there for clarification.
Thanks. Would that be the same date and dates that the other pickups are occurring?
For the spring cleaning, yes.
Yes, okay, great. Thanks for that clarification. We finally got it.
Finally got it straight.
Appreciate it.
Could you repeat the dates? Sorry, Mayor, could you just repeat the dates one last time?
February 28th through March 4th.
28th through March 4th, February 28th. Okay, thank you. That brings us to our first business item. This is C one, the review of the water reclamation facility quarterly report. And I also will ask somewhere along the line that perhaps you address Ms. Winholtz this question during your presentation or towards the end. And if you need to repeat it, let me know when you're done.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll I'll kick it over to Kyle Rohr, who's the program manager for the Wharf program.
Welcome, Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor Heding and members of City Council, and Kyle Rohr with Corolla Engineers. Nice to see you all again, and probably not my place to say, but I'm ready for in person as well. I'll have to but I'll be ready for in person. I will be sharing my screen. I also should point out that I'm accompanied by my partner in crime, Paul Amico, who is the Deputy Program Manager and the manager for the conveyance portion. So we will both be addressing Ms. Winholtz's question. And if you can let me know whether or not you can see my screen.
You're coming through clear?
Terrific.
Clearly, I should say.
So as in prior meetings, their only recommendation is is that you receive the quarterly report and of course provide input. So again, the summary, we provide the budget summary and schedule summary for those of you who at home who are new to viewing this. So the budget, current project budget, it still exceeds the baseline budget of 144.7 versus 125.9. This budget for the Q two 2022 reconciliation is unchanged from Q one and a few quarters back from there. I will point out that the budget reconciliation among project components, which I'll explain in a minute, has been adjusted during Q two. I should also point out, just as a reminder, that my report tonight is for the period ending December 31st of 2021. We remain on schedule with the time schedule order from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The compliance deadline is February 23rd of 2023, and substantial completion of the secondary improvements required for TSO compliance as of the end of this report period. And I'll talk more about that at the end. Remains January 5th of 2022. Again, just as a reminder, the TSO compliance requirements have to do with the secondary treatment requirements for discharge into the Pacific Ocean, but don't include improvements for the recycled water components of the program. It's just the treatment and discharge. This is a reminder. So I think next quarter, I'm going to have to change the orientation of this slide. I think I said this last time, but it's getting a little tough to read. I apologize. All I want to show you here is that on the far right, we're still at 144, 674, 877. And I'll zoom in and show you what I mentioned, that the program component allocation has been slightly revised during Q two. What happened during Q two, and I gave you a heads up at the end of my Q one presentation, was that there were a number of amendments for the compliance, for the conveyance facilities element of the program. During Q two, funds were allocated from the construction contingency and also from the general project into the conveyance facility bucket. No change to the water reclamation facility budget item, nor the recycled water facilities item. The general project reallocation had to do with some fine tuning of allocating general project costs, which are costs that generally are attributed to the program as a whole. But for those costs that we feel belong to one bucket or the other in terms of project components, quarterly, we look at that and we move them and allocate them accordingly. And as I mentioned, the construction contingency was reduced in order to fund the conveyance amendments. So this is how the expenditures break out by component during the quarter. The lion's share, of course, is the water reclamation facility. Again, that's the treatment plant. That's the inside defense plant on South Bay Boulevard. And of course, the conveyance facilities, which are the pipelines, recycled water facilities are not moving along very quickly, unfortunately, and I have some comments about that coming up. And the rest is general project. And again, just for, as a reminder, general project includes the program management costs, which is which is Corolla and our whole sub consultant team, as well as city labor, city services such as legal and other city consultants. So as a comparison to the last quarter, there's your difference. We're we're project expenditures to date of about $83 million of the 144 budget. And that statement alone is a pretty good segue into, well, are we spending fast enough? And unfortunately, we aren't. I've been before this body and as well CPAC before expressing the need for us to get, quite frankly, more in the ground faster. So as you can see by this graph, the cash flow projections are behind. We we should be spending more than we are, and I'm going to discuss why that is, and that's kind of a way of Ms. Winholtz's very good question that I'm sure many of you watching at home have. And quite frankly, a frustration that is shared by your program management team. This is the milestone schedule as of the end of December 31st, 2021. It's important for me to point that out as the next slides I'm going to show after this. The program's schedule as of the 31st of December has not changed. One of the, one of the drawbacks of us presenting this report, I know you at home and the council members alike are like, well, you know, it's February 22nd, why are we talking about December 31st? You know, unfortunately, a lot of work has to go into pulling the fiscal, the financial numbers together in order to make a report that's thorough and 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 as accurate as as humanly possible, and a lot of effort by Sarah's team and the city staff, which is why often by the time I'm presenting this information, new information has been developed, has come to light, and has been discussed in the public forum. So let's move on to that. So looking ahead to quarter three, and I should say in the side, I do not like sharing, I do not like providing this news, I do not like having to tell you this. It seems like I'm delivering bad news often. And it's it's professionally and personally frustrating to me that I have to tell you that schedule's been, is going to be delayed. But I also have a responsibility to be as transparent as I can possibly be. That said, the conveyance facilities' construction schedule will be delayed. During quarter three, Mr. Amico and I are working closely with Anvil, the contractor, and other parties for, to mitigate the best that we can these delays. They're primarily due to, and I have Paul, Paul just appears on my screen, I just see him, so we can answer questions when I'm done with my remarks and really drill down to your satisfaction. But the primary primary culprit of these schedules delays has to do with the coordination between EPA and SHPO. There's been a number of delays that were not anticipated and the process, the approval process between EPA and SHPO for this project has been unusual compared to prior, compared to other projects. In addition to that, related to that, I should say, is that this has resulted into reduced construction, reduced productivity by your construction contractor on a couple of fronts. When we're having issues with particular parts of the alignment and waiting for EPA and SHPO to green light the approaches we are going to make, contractors going to make in order to monitor and mitigate and manage cultural remain discovery, those delays require the conveyance construction contractor to re-shift how they put pipe in the ground. They have to readjust their schedule. EPA says you can't work there, they had planned to work there next week, they can't do it. That is part of the challenge and the frustration, again, that we share with Ms. Winholtz. That, well, this stick of pipe was supposed to take this long. What happened? Well, we had to move crews, we had to do X, we had to do Y, we had to do Z. Again, we can drill down on that after this presentation. But the second issue related to productivity has to do with areas that are culturally significant with a lot of mon, with a lot of monitoring. Quite frankly, the ability of the construction contractor to move quickly is very limited. And so we also have a productivity issue there where they slip on their own test schedules. Again, I'm speaking, I'm kind of taking Paul's thunder, so we can talk more about it a little later. What I do want to tell you, though, is after the conveyance, excuse me, part of the part of the program, we're looking at mitigation measures to try to be more efficient in terms of how we monitor the cultural resources. Our subcontractor Far Western has done an excellent job thinking outside the box to say, you know, what if, what if we do it this way, what if we do it that way? Which requires blessing by EPA and blessing by SHPO. But it has been successful, in my opinion, and and the delays, I think, have been mitigated by getting creative and efficient. The second thing is, excuse me, related to the delays of the conveyance, a big frustration of the conveyance delays is that the wastewater treatment plant, the Wharf, if you will, is expecting to receive influent, which is sewage, from the collection system in order for them to start up and testing and commissioning a facility. The more the construction contractor for the conveyance is delayed, the bigger that gap grows to where the design build team building the wastewater treatment plant is waiting. And waiting costs money. And by far the biggest financial exposure to this program is having to either demobilize or have the design build team wait for the sewage. So one of the mitigation managers that we have been, I think, quite successful working on, combined effort of the Corolla Program Management Team and the JV DB team building the plant and city, we all put our heads together and said, well, how can we make that gap smaller? What are ways that we can do to do commissioning and startup testing in such a way where we're not sitting on our hands? We are productive and we aren't exposing the city to extended overhead. So again, being the bearer of bad news, the other outstanding component of the program is the recycled water facility. So these are the wells. This is the IPR system that you're so so desperately in need of. And I completely empathize that we want to get you that water as soon as we can. Unfortunately, that schedule's going to be delayed as well. And I should have said at the onset that for both the conveyance and for the recycled water facilities, and actually for the treatment plant itself, the schedules are going to be adjusted. We are still working during this quarter, Q three, to refine and nail down the best that we can, a supportable, but not overly optimistic, but a fair, supportable schedule that we're going to present to you next quarter to show you what this looks like. We are, and I think I've said this in public before, we have been very reluctant, I have been very reluctant as a program manager to make changes to the schedule, whether it's either crying wolf or saying everything's great, the frequent schedule adjustments, only to have to reset them. We believe in, by the time we get to Q three reports, what we present to you will be supportable. So that said, the recycled water facilities, the construction delays, first of all, we have procurement delays, not to get overly in the details here. I know I'm talking quite a bit right now, but the the tip of the spear, if you will, for the recycled water facilities element is is the pilot injection well. Without that, that is the well that we put in to figure out essentially, how is the water going to go into the aquifer? Without that, we can't do anything. There is, it is the critical path item. Unfortunately, procurement delays, a tight construction market, to try to get that well installed, it was a nightmare. Currently, we have, we 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 rebid the project. And this is one of the questions from Ms. Winholtz, so I'm kind of hitting that, but I can come back to it if you guys want. Where she was questioning, you know, what is the status of that? Well, the status is that the second round, the second bid is out and the proposals, the bid proposals are due on the 15th of March. We've had strong interest compared to the last go around for reasons I can explain later, if you if you like. But anyway, back on, back on the point here, that the second item of causing the delays for the recycle causing the delays for the recycled water components, again, are the EPA-SHPO coordination issues. We have a very culturally sensitive area out there. And again, back and forth with EPA and SHPO is something that we, that no one, quite frankly, including our subcontractor doing the monitoring, anticipated. In addition, there's going to be additional requirements for the United States Fish and Wildlife and the Corps of Engineers. And what isn't shown there, and what I also should talk about is that the regulators from the Regional Board and Department of Drinking Water, I think I've said in previous remarks, that the particular treatment train and reuse technology that Moro Bay is using for this program has not been permitted before. The whole IPR approach and direct quotable reuse is proven and permitted and regulators know how to handle it. But the way the wastewater is being treated prior to the IPR is a different set of technologies. That's to say that the Corolla team and the regulators are actually working to develop together what these requirements should be and what does approval look like and what studies need to be done. And we're kind of developing precedent as we go along. Good thing is that you're going to have a state of the art, wonderful system when it's done. But there's a little bit of pains that go along with it, unfortunately. And this has caused delays, including additional studies that we had assumed could be done concurrent with the construction schedule of that particular element, when in fact, they have to be done, we recently learned, they have to be done at the very end, after everything is completed. And that will add another six months until you're right now, in addition to the other delays. So again, I'm probably oversharing. I just want to give as much information as I can because you definitely deserve to understand what's going on here. And lastly, you know, I talked about construction productivity. This is another problem with the recycled wells as well. Again, this is just a look ahead. And I think during the next council meeting that we see each other, the quarter three report, we can get into as much detail as you would like. And I'm probably giving you more information than you're really asking for right now. But I think it's important just to set you up so you know what's coming in the next schedule. We're also mitigating this problem. Regular review and adjustment of task sequencing. So we're figuring out with the recycled water element, can we, the program management team, do things differently? Can we resequence things? So we're constantly looking at that. In addition, we're looking at alternative procurement approaches to expedite the contracting. For instance, we have to hire a design engineer to design all the well infrastructure. Are there faster ways we can do that? And some of these suggestions will be brought to this body in a future, in future council meeting. And lastly, I kind of alluded to this a minute ago, that our regulatory experts, the Corolla water process engineers and the permitting experts of this firm are in constant communication with the regulators about, work with us, right? You know, how can we do this? How can we do this better? How can we help you regulator do your job? What can Corolla do? What can, you know, how can we make this thing go quicker? It's a challenge, but we're not giving up. And I think we've seen minor successes along the way. Again, I apologize for being so long-winded and for having to, I just, for having to give you bad news again. And again, you'll have another opportunity to talk about this when I give you the Q3 report in a few months. So this wasn't, this wasn't really necessary, but I wanted to put in some slides that are like yay, you know, positive stuff. So here we go. I have some things that hopefully will make us feel a little bit better. When I was before you, excuse me, for the Q1 report, I talked about a pending change order related to the standby emergency generators for one of the pump stations. The San Luis Obispo County Air Pollution Control District was going to have stricter, had more stringent requirements that were going to probably cost about $300,000 to retrofit. Cutting to the chase, we got a letter about a month ago, actually, the 11th, we got the letter that said, no, you're good. What you have is fine. And so that $300,000 amendment that was approved by this body, we won't need it. It can go back to the contingency and be used for other things. And so this was, this was great news. Every little bit helps. Also, we are, we have a couple of new grant funding opportunities for the program that we are very excited about. Corolla submitted an application to the California Department of Water Resources under the urban and multi-benefit drought relief grant program for two different projects. One, the recycled water facilities that I was talking about, the wells, if you will. I'm sorry, the, yeah, the wells. And another project has to do with the rehabilitation of your existing well system, your existing groundwater management system, to the tune of combined of about 20, you can do the math yourself, about $21 million. And that's grants, that's not loans. So fingers crossed that we get some of that. The minimum, I believe the minimum award is $2 million, $2 million to $5 million per project. If we get it, it's no guarantee that we get it. But we put together a really strong proposal. My team, hand in hand with the city. Thank you for your help. So I'll keep you abreast of that. Secondly, the US Bureau of Recommendation Title 16, you may remember that Corolla submitted an application on behalf of the city last year and we weren't successful. This year, the maximum grant amount is 30 million instead of 20 million. And we're diligently working on that, literally as we speak. I'm sure my team is still cranking on it. It's due on March 15th. And fingers crossed that we get something out of that. So I think this is good news. Again, fingers crossed that we will get some funds to, you know, to help us offset the unfortunate escalation of the overall program budget. So lastly, actually, second to lastly, show me the money. This was also a, I think, I know it was. This was also a question provided to city council ahead of time from Ms. Winholt's. Her timing couldn't have been better because we just found out yesterday about the status of some of the requests, the dispersment requests you have from the state, state revolving loan fund program. And this will be updated in the Q3 report. So the planning loan dispersment, $930,000 was requested. $485,000 of that was approved. But we're expecting, we're expecting to get most of everything and not leaving anything on the table. And that, we had to resubmit based on some categorization of costs. And SRF will do budget reallocation. So we're hopeful that we'll get that whole $930 and that will close out the planning loan. And the really good news is construction loan dispersment number two. So we requested, we put in a reimbursement request, which is quite an effort from, especially from the design build team that had a kind of a change their accounting approaches and city staff and the Corolla team. The dispersment request was $10.9 million. And we will receive all $10.9 million without any holdback, without any resubmit. That's currently in accounting at the state. And we hope we see that in a couple of weeks. Same with the construction loan dispersment number three, which was about half that amount. But again, we heard recently that we will also, nothing will be held back from that either. We get all of that as well. And I point that out because in prior council meetings, remember discussions that Sarah Johnson-Rios had about potentially cash flow challenges. This was really, this was really a test for the construction loan dispersment cycle. Construction loan dispersment two, and you know, Sarah can probably correct me later. But I, I think that by the time we get it, that cycle will be about three months. And I think that we were worried and anticipating that that cycle could be as long as six, which would create some cash flow challenges. So anyway, this is, this is good news. Again, it's a little nerdy, but I did my, did my best to give you some good news here. All right, last slide. Trust me, I'm going to stop talking any minute now. I presented this information with the exception of the schedule information. I presented the fiscal information to CPAC on the 15th. The input from that meeting was pretty minimal. There were new CPAC members that kind of wanted to be brought up to speed on the program funding approach. And the Corolla and the city team will be providing that information to CPAC. And the second was understandably the concern regarding the cash flow projection trend, the underspending that I've talked about on one of my previous slides. That was a concern. And I explained to them the same way that I explained to you that we were falling behind and getting this stuff in the ground. And with that, I can entertain questions, discussions. I am in possession of the written questions submitted by, submitted to the clerk, excuse me, by Ms. Winholt's. Mayor Heding, if you want me to go through those, I'm happy to. It's whatever, whatever you like.
Thank you, Kyle. If there are some high level items on that list that you wanted to cover just really quickly, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I realize.
I don't want to, you know, go over the 25 questions, but.
No, I will just hit the, well, the real quick and first referring to were the ones provided by Ms. Winholt's and that we didn't talk about. Ms. Winholt's had a question about what measures are being taken to reel in the overruns, pointing out that we all know that the project is over the original budget by quite a bit. And I can say, you know, specifically what we're trying to do to reel in the overruns and to manage it. I mentioned the startup and commissioning process with the work. We're trying to streamline that. The conveyance, and Paul might be able to talk more about this. We did some readjustment of the alignment so the contractor could have a more efficient approach. And I mentioned the recycled water facilities. We're trying to find new procurement methods. The, there was a question she had regarding, I don't want to get too detailed here. The relationship between a couple of numbers in the tables of the report and the message that I want to give, what she was asking is, I've talked about change orders coming up and potential change orders. Why is the budget not changing? And the answer is, is that with that 144 number at this point includes contingency amounts for all those elements. And so we haven't had the need to change the budget. Those are, those are taking, those are in there. She had a question about the Air Pollution Control District, which I answered in my remarks. And the last was the pilot injection well, which I also responded.
Thank you, Kyle. Very much appreciate your report.
Excuse me, Mayor, did you want me to say anything about South Bay? And specifically addressing Ms. Winholt's question about just schedule in general, was Kyle sufficient in what he was describing to answer that?
You mean her original question on public comment?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, you can go ahead and quickly address that. Sure, absolutely.
Sure. Okay, so I mean, fair comment on the eight week, on the eight week schedule for South Bay Boulevard. You know, as we've progressed the pipelines toward the WRF in that specific instance, as we started working with Anvil and looking at the way they were going to lay out construction, working with Caltrans, taking into consideration the convalescent center and the number of calls that are there, shift changes and so on, we concluded that the best approach would be to leave South Bay Boulevard closed. It's while we progress the pipelines up to the WRF. We looked at it and said there was really no benefit to getting those ramps back open because, once we were progressing past there, because while we're under the bridge, we can accommodate traffic going to and from the convalescent center. And keeping that traffic from Los Osos to getting to the freeway, it was going to be very, very difficult, given the location of the trench and the fact that we needed a work zone there. So there wasn't really a lot of benefit to bringing that back open. And it seems to be working well right now with the community. And we know it's probably frustrating and adding some time. But it seems to be working well. Anvil has made some improvements to Quintana to remove some of the plates. They've paved some additional areas. They've made it a bit smoother. And so we're going to do our best to push them to progress that work quicker through that area. They have made very, very good production in the area when they have been, when it has been closed. Our concern with maybe overpromising on that timeframe under that bridge is when they get under the bridge, it's going to be, it's going to be slow going. So please be patient, follow our signage and expect some delays through there. But we think it'll be another couple of months before we're up into the WRF. Get those pipes tested. And we're hoping to beat it, but let's just expect that through April, it'll be closed. So.
Good, Paul. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. So we have both Kyle and Paul here and Greg as well. Open it up for council questions. Any council member questions? Councilmember Heller, I see your hand, sir.
I do have some, but based on what I've heard, I'd like to kind of look at my notes for a few minutes. Maybe someone else can go first.
Okay. Seeing no other hands. You want to look at your notes or do you want to?
If no one else has questions, I will ask.
Oh, here we go. Councilmember Ford has a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm trying to save you, Councilmember Heller. But honestly, my questions have been answered. But in an effort to save you some, or to give you some time, I wanted to commend the, I wanted to commend you guys because I'm so excited when I read that there was zero reportable incidents this quarter when it comes to construction safety. So I, you know, want to point out something positive in all of this, that there was zero injuries reported. So I thought that was, that was amazing. So great job to those involved. And yeah, I mean, I'm looking through and I've checked off all my questions. So Jeff, was that enough time?
That was very helpful. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, you're up, sir.
I do have some questions, but first I want to say to Paul and Kyle, as we all know, I've been in your seat. And sometimes projects go well and sometimes they don't. And I think when you get to the point that you're at tonight and acknowledging that this project is not going as well as everyone had hoped, that you're reporting frank news that people want to know about. People really want to know just the truth for the most part. If it's not going well, tell us what you're doing to try and get it back on track. And that's going to make most clients a lot happier than, than trying to always do the positive news, which I know we always want to report. But sometimes that's not possible. So thank you for that. The questions I have, of course, I always have my questions. A lot of it has, I'm looking forward, and I've worked with you and your staff or city staff to try and come up with a more succinct quarterly report in the future. We're at the stage here where we're less interested in the details and more interested in what's it going to cost at the end? And when's it going to be done? So a couple of questions for you. The baseline budget that you reported on tonight in one of your slides, the $126.94 million, if possible, could you, could you carry that on through all of your reports and charts and so forth? That basically identify a baseline budget? I wonder if you could do that? I know you weren't on board when that budget was developed. But if you could do that for consistency, that would help. Do you think you could do that?
Yes, sir, we could, we could definitely do that.
Okay. The other question is the estimates at completion, which is used throughout your report. It took me a while to figure this out, but this actually means the, your estimate at the close of the quarter that you're reporting on, isn't that right?
Councilmember Heller, no. It actually, the estimate at complete completion is where we believe the project, the program will end up when complete as of this quarter. Does that make sense?
As of the period you're reporting on.
Correct, so.
For Q2.
Our best supportable estimate of when the dust clears and everything's running great as of the end of December 2021. as of the end of December 2021 is 144.7 million dollars. But every, and you're asking a very good question, sir, especially on the heels of asking me about EAC, because this is kind of an interesting way that we have in reporting budget. Is that a typical EAC, as you well know, with your experience in, in construction and public projects, is that EAC has to do with, okay, you set the budget here in whatever year. The budget stays and EAC is what it, is what it is and we're adjusting EAC. On this program, granted, Corolla inherited this approach, which, which, which is, which is a fine approach. I mean, sorry, we inherited, this new project team inherited this approach. Was we essentially reset, we re-reconcile the budget on a quarterly basis. And so if that 144 number needs to change, it essentially becomes the new quote unquote baseline. And it's the same as the EAC, if that makes sense.
Well, I understand your, your logic there, but it's kind of an unconventional approach. And I'm just wondering if, because really it's close of quarter. It's the, if, if the project were completed at 123121, then that would be the, that would be the correct number if it were completed. But the project's not completed. So I'm wondering if you can change that to estimate a close of Q2. And, and then can you also come up with what you think the estimate of completion will be? So you've spent about 80 million of the 145 million. So you're 60% spent it. Can you estimate, and these are, these are guestimates, obviously they're not models we could do, but could you estimate how much more contingency you're going to need for the water reclamation facility? How much more money you think because of unforeseen conditions and so forth? You'll need to complete the piping program, you know, include the lag between the plant being done and the piping being done. Throw a number at that. Look at that recycled water project and say, hey, if things, if X, Y, and Z happened, we don't have the permits by this date. More money. I mean, these are guestimates. Since you're 60, you spent 60% of the dollars. Can you put together some kind of an estimate of completion of the whole project? Understanding that there are more things to, to happen.
Yeah, Councilmember Heller, I just want to make sure that I'm, if I'm, I'm probably not explaining this as well, and I want to make sure that I understand your question. So again, the information that you have in front of you for Q2 2022, what we're saying is that when the project is done, based on, based on the schedule that we have in 2022, based on a December, November 2023 completion, what we know right now, our best estimate is when the project is complete in December of 2023, it's going to be 144674. That is our best guess as of quarter two.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, but
Okay, and I do, and I do.
Has that, has that ever happened? Has, has any of your numbers for the whole project held for a quarter? It hasn't gone progressively almost. I mean, are they going to be, you anticipate there'll be no changes or unforeseen conditions in the piping project?
And now, okay, now, now I, yeah, I'm, I'm glad I asked that question because now I'm understanding what you're asking me. So for the last three or four quarters, the number has stayed at 144674 because what we have in each of those elements, whether it's recycled water element or the conveyance or the wastewater treatment plant itself, we're comfortable that when the project's over, that's what we're going to have. But every quarter, we look at it again. So next quarter, and we haven't done this exercise, next quarter I might come back and say, you know what? It's not 1446 anymore. It's 1452. And this is why. So every quarter, we go through that exercise again.
Okay. So I guess what I'd like to ask for next quarter's report, can you put a contingency in there for each of the three projects and the general project costs that accommodate the different obstacles or road bumps that you described tonight? And what do you think those might cost?
We, we certainly
I mean, the, the most common question I get for people is what's it going to cost when it's done? I mean, we have a local reporting, just throwing a number out there. That's not true of 175 million. I don't know. Is it 175 million? Did they talk to you? Where did that come from? So I'm just looking for a number. That number doesn't have to be set in stone. But, you know, there are going to be additional costs based on what you've talked about so far. So I guess I'd like, if possible, your next quarterly report, if you could, if you could put that in there, that would be great.
I understand. Thanks. Thanks for indulging me. I'm, I'm, I'm clear on what you're looking for. And as an aside, that information is in there, but you got to dig through footnotes to find it and
Okay.
Understand. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate you sticking with me on that. The next thing I want to talk about is the contingency. The remaining contingency for the whole program is 1.6 million. Is that right?
That sounds right.
So based on the percentage completed of the program, which is 60% or something, do you think that's enough of a contingency for, for the next two, three years?
Well, I will say this. So that, that is the, that is, that is contingency. Let me answer it more directly. I, I don't think so. You know, you, you understanding construction, you know, as, as program, as projects go closer to completion, the amount of contingency you, you need to carry obviously goes down. Quite frankly, I don't, I don't think there's a need to carry much of any contingency in the wastewater treatment plant right now, which every indication is that's going to finish substantially below the contracted GMP, which is reflected in the estimate of completion in the report. That said, I think for conveyance and for the recycled water elements, it's too early to tell whether that's going to be adequate. I mean, I would like to say that the worst is behind us on conveyance and maybe Paul, maybe Paul can add some flavor on that and I
Well, you know, you don't have to answer that really right now. I guess it's just if you can, if you can possibly put that in the next quarterly report contingency that you think will cover, will cover everything. On the, the wharf project, can you, can you cover the, the oil, the soil slip? If that isn't completely resolved, put a number in there for that. I mean, could you do that, you think?
Absolutely. But, but just to be clear, let me tell you, let me tell you what that looks like. I mean, the soil slip is already covered, but I know you're just using that as an example. But should we find, as we go through this analysis every quarter, should we find, look, we're not carrying enough contingency in light of what we think could happen on the conveyance or on the recycled water? If we were to do that, and I think this is what you're getting at, the 144.674 number would have to go up. But the answer to your question is yes, we can do that. We, we do that every quarter. But I think the new report format that we've been talking about could make that more clear.
Okay, I appreciate that. The other thing in terms of schedules, and we've talked a fair amount about this. Do you think your next quarterly report will have a Gantt chart with critical path milestones on there? For example, when you talked about the pilot injection well as being on the critical path, I didn't know that. So do you think you could put a schedule together with a few key points and miles, critical path milestones like, like the pilot injection well?
Absolutely, absolutely. The lever of granularity that you want to see in that schedule is absolutely up to you. I mean, the, the report that we use, that we've used since, since I became the new program manager, my new team, it was, it was the same level of detail that was started at the very beginning. That's not to say we can't do deep dives to show that particular milestone, for instance. Sure.
So I think that, yeah, I think the, the council and the general public are looking for the boulders, not the, not the grains of sand at this point. So.
Right, right. Exactly. And the art, the art is figuring out how big of a rock you want to save. And, but I'm confident we can do that.
Now, a question about the permitting for the recycled water project. It sounds to me, the way you described it, is that the way we're doing this in Morro Bay has never been done in California. Is that correct? Or did I misunderstand you? Am I missing something?
Let me put a finer point on that. It has, the IPR has been permitted in California. What's unique about this? What's unique about this project in, in specifics? Is that the way you're treating your wastewater prior to the advanced treatment necessary for IPR is different. Namely, you're using a membrane, a membrane bioreactor.
So that's, so that's never been done before in California?
Yeah. So the, so if you look at the boxes of the processes, this particular box, the MBR box, isn't that they've seen before on an IPR application? That's the only thing that's, that's why it's different.
Okay, so you know, it sounds to me like we need some help from Sacramento or Washington or something. Do you have any ideas? Can the mayor help with this? Can one of our representatives in Sacramento help get through this, this permitting logjam here? I mean, what are your thoughts about how we can help you?
I can't, I can't opine on that. I mean, we, as much as I'd like to, I mean, we are a
Well, so
engineering consulting firm. We don't have too much pull.
Would you mind if I chimed in real quick?
Not at all, sir.
Councilmember Heller, on it's, on the permitting, the, the pilot injection well, right? Until we're complete with the pilot injection test and we can prove, we can demonstrate the modeling that's been done thus far. The answer is no, not at this point to speed up permitting. The pilot injection well is the next step in doing the recycled water component of the project. It sets the basis of design once we understand the capacity of the aquifer to take the water we're injecting. So once that's done, then we might get back to you about that one.
Okay. So that's the one that has to be rebid? Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, it's out on the street now.
Okay, great. Moving on to another question. So I know the bike path has come up a lot because trees have been removed. I understand there's a draft landscape plan out there to repair and everything. Is that something that we can share with the public, you think? At this point, or has it been shared? Has it been posted on the website or anything?
Well, the, the concept plan has not been posted on the website. We can certainly do that for what, what that might look like. And again, it's just a general concept. It's a one pager that gives the, the flavor of what kind of trees we would be looking at, what kind of cross section. And it lists tree species that would be used in that area. One of the things that we are doing right now as we've moved forward, we've, we've had some back and forth with coastal commission about the reconfiguration of the pipelines, as we've discussed in the past. And we stand on that is coastal is reluctant to move forward. So we're looking at that again to reconfigure that, to, to, to figure out how we're going to leave the bike path when we're done. So we are going to move forward on a more specific plan with that. And we've already enlisted the same landscape architect that did the concept plan for putting some more detail around the specific, our specific design, where the pipelines are and what trees we're going to put back in place to restore the bike path area where the trees have been removed. So that's currently in process. That's just been launched. But we're glad to put that concept plan up on the website as soon as possible.
That'd be great. Those are my questions, Mayor. Thank you, Corolla folks, both of you.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Looking for other hands? So let me, just a couple of questions, Kyle and Paul. Original proposed budget, 100, tell me if I'm correct, 126 million. Current estimate as of this report, which is December 31st, 2021, is 144 and a half roughly. And so the delta on that is we're over 18.5 million. Is that correct? And you've delineated where those differences are in the report, which is pretty well articulated. And I think what Councilmember Heller was talking about is the same question I get. So where is it going to end? You know, and I, I know it's tough to even, I'm not asking you for a number right now, but, but somewhere along the line, it would be good to potentially discuss that. The other side of the coin is that I know Corolla has worked very hard in obtaining our financing. And, you know, I was at the state water board presentation when you guys did the work. And this was prior to you, Kyle, and Paul being involved at this level. But that was obviously an unprecedented loan at 0.9% that is now coming to fruition and, and cash flow is looking pretty good. Is that correct with regard to the project overall?
Yes.
It's same thing with WIFI, the WIFI loan, obviously one of 13 in the nation to receive that 0.9% basically loan. And, and is it true that the delta in terms of debt service savings is about somewhere in the range of 50 to 70 million dollars based upon base case? I, I won't, I won't hold you to that. I'll withdraw the question, but I'll just, I'll make the statement that because of the hard work that, that you guys have done in advocating both at the federal and state level, you know, we're, we're saving from a debt service standpoint, somewhere between, in my estimate, 50 to 70 million dollars based upon floating a bond, which at the time that we originally looked at the case was about 3%. And so as far as you know right now, and this is the real crux of all the data and the question that I'm trying to get to. I'm going to put you on the spot. Given what you know with regard to debt service savings and capital construction costs for all three phases of the project, with a delta overage of 18 and a half million and potential debt service savings of somewhere between 50 and 70, is there any possible way that when this project is completed, that the current rate structure is not going to meet the needs of the project?
I cannot answer that question because Corolla was not your rate consultant. I'm sorry, Mayor, that I have to pun it, but
Okay, that's cool. So
Maybe Mr. Collins or, or Johnson Rios can comment.
Sure. We, we, yeah, thanks. Thank you, Kyle. We, this Scott Collins, city manager, we, we stress, stress tested our rates. And, you know, there's, there's definitely capacity to, to go up if we need to. Obviously, our goal is not to go up just because the rates allow for it. You know, we, we did lock in historically low interest rates for both WIFI and SRF. As you mentioned, which saved in that ballpark of 50 to 70 million dollars in debt savings, which is allows us to absorb some of these regulatory challenges that we're facing. So at this point in time, we don't foresee a need to raise rates based on the capital costs of this project.
Thanks. Appreciate that. And then as far as I understand now with regard to what you're doing with the state water board and as Councilmember Heller suggested, if there's any way I can help or assist in talking to other electeds at a higher level, please call on me at any time to do that. But in essence, the regulations, given the type of technical system that we're creating, are being written right now with, with your help. I mean, they don't really fully exist. Is that correct?
That's, that's, that's correct. That's for the most part. That's a, that's a correct statement. And I think when you say Corolla's help, it's certainly not me. It's people that are 100 times, 100 times smarter than I am. But yes, that's fact, that's factually correct, Mayor.
And that, that, that's caused some delays. I know you've spoken to that as well. My last question is, you know, it was great, it's great to have the EPA WIFI alone. But in my experience from the very beginning of this project, that has created layers and layers of regulatory hurdles that you've had to, that have been added that if we didn't have that law, we wouldn't have because of the federal nature of the law. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
And those hurdles have been difficult and have caused, caused numerous delays.
I think that's, I think that's fair and cause. I mean, they're, they're not insurmountable obstacles. But unfortunately, they weren't, they weren't anticipated at the very beginning of the program, namely with respect to the contracts for the, for construction. And so it required some rework on both the city side and your contractor side. And frankly, on Corolla's financial management side to make sure that mainly SRF is happy, which is why, you know, I, I put in the slide that we got everything we asked for on this due construction loan. That's kind of a big deal.
Which is great.
Where it was a lot of work and again, hats off to Sarah and her team and, and my team and the BD team that we're, we're giving SRF what, what they want because we want the money. So it's, it's, it's a good thing.
Yeah. And so my last, it'll be a comment and it'll be a comment of thank you. Thank you to, to Corolla. Thank you to our city manager. Thank you to our assistant city manager, Sarah Johnson Rios, Scott Collins, our city manager, and Greg Qualick, our public works director for the great work that you're doing with this project. I know it's been challenging. We do have questions we have to answer for the community. That's why I think we have to ask these tough questions and thanks for hanging in there and allowing us to do that. Other questions?
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, I will go to public comment. This is public comment for item C-1 on the agenda. Any member of the public wishing to speak on C-1, please do so now. And James, do we have any public comments, sir?
Got a hand raised from Betty Winholtz.
Welcome back, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Winholtz. I want to thank you for answering most of my questions that I submitted and thorough revelation on where we are. It's actually comforting to know the reality of, of where the community stands with both the construction and the finances. And we'll look forward to the next quarter. I, I have to, I may need to apologize when you address the diesel backup generator across from the high school. I ended up taking a phone call. So, I'm wondering if you address that? And if you can tell me why we're using diesel instead of some other kind of fuel, since it is so close to a sensitive site as our high school? And we do have energy outage just more than once a year here, that I would be concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. James, next public comment, sir?
I see no raised hands, so you should be good to go.
And I'll close public comment, bring it back and ask if either Kyle or whomever might just address that again.
I could take a swing at it and Paul can correct.
It was gonna, I was actually going to jump in there, Kyle, sorry. It was a design, it was a decision made during design, the design of the, of the, of the conveyance facilities. And, and Ms. Winholtz, forgive me if I'm, if I, that was a long time ago. So, but in general, diesel generators tend to be lower cost than natural gas generators. There's also the availability of a gas supply in the area. So, there are several factors that go into that availability of fuel and, and so on. So, in that particular case, my recollection is we did discuss or otherwise evaluate natural gas versus diesel. And I would actually have to go consult the conceptual design report to see what we, where we landed on that. So, that's not something that I can answer right off the top of my head specifically for this. But in general, those are the characteristics that we evaluate during design.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. Okay, this is a receive and file unless there are any other comments. I'll once again thank our consultants, Corolla engineers, Paul and Kyle, our city manager, assistant city manager, and our public works director, Mr. Qualick, for all the good work you're doing. Appreciate you all. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Councilmember Heller, sorry, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments if, if I might.
Yes.
So, as I mentioned, Kyle and Paul, we've been talking about the, the report for some time. And I know your report format has been approved by a prior council. But considering the stage of the project that we're at, I am looking for a more streamlined report. We've had conversations about this. I'm looking basically to maximize the, the use of words that are understandable by the general public. Most of us don't know the acronyms or the technical words for, for what you're talking about because we're not engineers. And if possible, we'd like to see all financial information presented in spreadsheet format as opposed to text. And all scheduling informations presented in Gantt charts with critical path milestones. And just keep it as simple as possible and as brief as possible. The council has a lot of important issues before them. And we really need the basic information from quarter to quarter. And I appreciate you hanging in there and getting this project done. I know it will get done. But if you can help us with a more streamlined report, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Yeah, thank you, Kyle. Just a quick note that from a process standpoint, I just want to be clear that the format is approved and has been approved by council and can't be changed. But I know that Councilmember Heller and I are on the WRF subcommittee and supposedly will be working on doing the things that you've said. So, I think just as that summary, and that will come to council to be approved as hopefully a simpler and clearer WRF quarterly report. All right. Thanks. This is a receiving file. With that moves us to item C-2. This is the review of our fiscal year 2122 mid-year budget report and general fund forecast and approval of new job classifications and amended salary schedule. And I'm going to turn it over, I believe, to our assistant manager, Ms. Johnson Rios or Mr. Collins.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll lead it off and then hand it over to Ms. Johnson Rios. I'm just going to give you a quick overview of what you're going to hear and what you've read already leading up to tonight and was presented to Citizens Finance Advisory Committee last Tuesday. But ultimately, it's a good message that's going to be delivered this mid-year, which we do typically the second meeting of February each year to give an update as to where we are and leading up to the next budget process. This, this year is, just like last year is unlike any year prior to with COVID-19. We've, we're looking like we're making close to a full recovery, which necessitates a lot of changes, mostly in a good direction in this mid-year. We are seeing increases in our transient occupancy tax or TOT, as well as the corresponding sales tax increase. We did see some need for revisions based upon the work of our transition team. There was a lot that they were trying to handle with a lot of new things and a lot of new people. So, there's some changes to our, our budget based on that. And then we do have some increased costs that we're incurring just to kind of keep up with all of those changes and the, the needs of our community. And then we're also requesting additional staffing, again, to both meet the, the current, current needs, but also address our goals that council has adopted as of late last year, which is an ambitious work plan, but is necessary to both meet the needs of today and address the opportunities for tomorrow. So, delighted to turn it over to Sarah Johnson Rios, who her team has done a fantastic job, along with the department head team and division managers within those departments to work on budgets. It's been very challenging to say the least, and especially when you have 100% or close to 100% turnover of your finance department in the middle of a budget process. But everybody's handled it really well despite all those challenges and a lot that has to do with Sarah and her leadership and her team. So, with that, I'll hand it off to her and we'll be happy to answer questions as we go through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, and I will go ahead and share my screen with you and run through a PowerPoint that will walk you through a lot of information. And so, I am going to let you know upfront that this presentation will be in three parts. I'll be walking you through the first part and the third part. And Dana Swanson will be walking you through the second part, the staffing changes. So, we'll pause at the end of each section and ask if council wants to pause for questions or if you'd like us to just continue through until the end. And with that, I'll dive right into the first section, which is the mid-year budget report. And so, as you saw in your packet, there was a fairly lengthy and detailed attachment to the staff report with a lot of detail about how the major funds are doing and a lot of detail about the recommended budget changes at mid-year. And so, I'll touch on the high points. And I'd like to start with just a reminder of why we do this and, and what exactly we're looking at. And so, this report covers the first six months of the city's 12-month fiscal period. So, that covers July through December 2021. And it's really a snapshot in time. So, all of the reports are run through December 31st, not, not too different from the Wharf Quarterly Report that you just heard about. So, some of the revenues and expenditures that the city receives and expends are not always going to be on a straight line basis throughout the fiscal years. There will be some data anomalies looking at, at that snapshot point in time. But it's still a good opportunity for us to assess how we're doing, especially with the major revenue sources, the major expenditure trends, and looking at primarily at the major funds. So, overall, as Mr. Collins said, it's a positive mid-year report. Our recovery is continuing since the onset of the pandemic. And Morro Bay has a combination of revenue sources, which we'll go over in a moment. But some of them are more volatile and tied to business cycles and tourism. Primarily, the transient occupancy tax and sales tax revenues that we get tend to fluctuate a bit more. And those had declines during the initial onset of pandemic, but have recovered really nicely and more quickly than in some of the more metropolitan areas in the state. And so, that's really good news. That allows us to continue gradually restoring the city's budget and staffing levels to pre-pandemic levels and to continue to address core city services, as well as council goals that you all adopted in November. This, these mid-year recommendations also allow us to continue to contribute to the general fund emergency reserve based on council's updated policy from last June. And I'll touch more on that later. The enterprise funds overall are tracking well. We're not really looking at any major operating changes for the enterprise funds, but we are looking for some CIP budget changes, which can be supported by the water and sewer funds so that we can continue to advance the One Water projects. And this was taken to CFAC, this entire mid-year report, which also serves for their semi-annual review of measure Q and E. They received the report and discussed it a bit, didn't recommend any specific changes. And so, it's coming before you tonight in the same format that it went to CFAC. The bottom line, citywide across all funds, is that we're recommending 1.8 million dollars in net revenue increases, that's excluding transfers, and approximately 4 million dollars in net expenditure increases, also excluding transfers. And I'll go through that in more detail. The differential there is largely due to CIP, recommended CIP budget expenditures, which, as I mentioned, can be covered by the water and sewer fund balances. So, first we'll look at the general fund. And we'll start with revenues. So, this graph on the right shows the composition of the general fund revenues and really focusing on the major revenue sources. Property tax is the largest revenue source in the general fund budget for 2122. About one-third of revenues come from property taxes. We're not recommending any budget changes in that line item. These are relatively consistent with the county projections that city staff received. This is one of the areas where there can be some anomalies in timing. So, we're keeping a close eye on that, but we're not recommending any budget changes at mid-year. The next largest is TOT, transient occupancy tax revenues. And that is the, the 10% share that goes to the city. That, as I mentioned, is recovering quite significantly. And so, we are recommending a budget increase there. I'll have a slide next that, that outlines how much. And similarly with sales tax, that is also recovering well. And so, we're recommending an increase there. The other relatively smaller revenue sources for the general fund are, are stable. We might actually see additional revenues in some of the charges for service line items. But because other areas of that line, of that category are still recovering from the pandemic, namely some of the recreational programs, we're not recommending any major changes to the revenue budget there. So, it's really the two, sales tax and TOT, where we're recommending changes. And that leads me to this slide. I will note that there was a typo in the version of the slides that went in the packet. So, this is updated here, consistent with the staff report. So, the TOT increase that we're recommending is $350,000. And that's largely based on revenues that we've already seen for the first half of the fiscal year being over what we anticipated. So, this is still a relatively conservative number. And in talking with Visit Morro Bay, we think that's appropriate because we just don't know exactly what's going to happen in the winter months and the second half of the fiscal year. So, we're confident that that, that that is a reasonable number. Same with sales tax. As I think many of you know, we work with HDL, a consultant that has expertise in sales tax revenues, and they help us with our projections. We're actually recommending a sales tax revenue increase of approximately 50% of what HDL thinks we might be able to receive this fiscal year. We, we don't want to overestimate that and, and come up short. So, we think, again, this is a relatively conservative approach, given that we are still coming out of the pandemic. So, those are recommendations there. And then we're also recommending that we increase the budget to reflect revenues that we've already received for mutual aid reimbursement or that we anticipate receiving for mutual aid that we've already completed. And this is through our fire response. That is offset, you'll see on the expenditure side in a moment, by expenditures. So, it's essentially just paying the city back. And then similarly, we're recommending a small increase to reflect estate grant revenues for planning software. And also, you'll see a corresponding increase on the expenditure side. So, that's a total recommended, a general fund revenue increase of 1.15 million. And that will fully cover the recommended expenditure adjustments on the general fund, which I'll turn to next. So, this chart is broken down by category similar to the revenue side, highlighting that, like most cities, because we provide city services with people, personnel does represent the majority of the general fund budget at 68%. That includes all personnel-related costs, so salaries, benefits, and pension costs. And then supplies and expenses is the other bulk of that at 24%. I had a good question from a CFAC member about are we recommending any across the board CPI increases for supplies and expenses? We are not at mid-year, but I, you will see some of that incorporated in the general fund forecast for the out years. We are taking a more targeted approach at mid-year and increasing specific areas where we know that expenses will likely exceed budget, in part due to inflation. So, and then the other categories here, just as a reminder, the general fund contributes to CIPs at a rate of roughly 6% of total general fund expenditures currently. And then pays for IT services. That's a transfer to the internal service fund. All right. There's a lot of numbers on here, and I'm going to touch on some of the high-level changes that we're recommending on the general fund expenditure budget. And then if you have questions after Mr. Collins, then most of the department heads are available to answer, to go into more detail if you'd like, but I'll touch on kind of the high points. I should note that some of these have already been approved by council. And so, we've had language in some of your prior resolutions that has at stock to come back and implement the, the budget changes that you've directed through other items. The first one on the list is one of those. So, that's increasing the monthly contributions to city employee health insurance premiums. And so, that hadn't been increased in some years. And so, council, we brought that decision before council and are increasing that to ensure that we're keeping up with increased costs for employees for healthcare. So, that's a general fund-wide increase of $38,000 approximately. And then the rest are department-specific. So, and the police department, roughly half of that total, the 67,000, is related to gun control measures. And this was a council direction from the fall. So, we are implementing that. The budget increases are actually lower than what was anticipated in that original staff report. And there's been some delays in implementing some of those measures due to COVID. But the police department is still moving forward as they are able to. And so, that's reflected here in this number. And then increased insurance costs and to update the budget, consistent with our latest insurance invoices. On the fire side, you see that same $480,000 number that is on the revenue side. That goes to overtime and associated benefit costs that the city incurs in responding to those mutual aid incidents. On the public works department is where you see some of the supplies and expense budgets. We're recommending increases for, costs are increasing. And we've got some deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed. So, those are some of the highlights. And then, as I mentioned, the staff report goes into much more detail about specific expenditures that comprise that 100 to 2,000. Recreation is a combination of increases to address budget errors that we discovered as part of the adopted fiscal year 2122 budget and also to increase staffing levels, primarily part-time staffing levels as we're able to restore pre-pandemic service levels in the recreation area. Admin services, we are recommending, and Ms. Swanson will get into the staffing conversation. Admin services, we are recommending, and Ms. Swanson will get into the staffing conversation in more detail, but these are the fiscal impacts of the staffing conversation for the remainder of the current fiscal year. And I will just pause and note that all of these staffing-related costs are built into the general fund forecast that you'll see later in the presentation for future years. So on, in the admin services area, we are recommending that we restore the final finance position from the pre-pandemic staffing levels as a fiscal analyst position. And the cost for that, if we're able to find someone during the current fiscal year, would be $30,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year. Community development, this is expending that grant revenue that I mentioned on electronic review software that's currently being implemented. And then in the city clerk area, we are recommending, this is roughly $30,000 as council directed to fund the city election in June. And then the other $35,000 is associated with a staffing recommendation to bifurcate the current combined position of city clerk and HR manager and break that out to reflect additional workload, which you'll hear about more in a moment. In the city manager's office, this funding roughly half, well, less than half, was to support regional coordination. We may see some reimbursement from other cities for that, but we do need council authority to spend it on the expenditure side, even if we do book revenues later as reimbursements. And then here's a, an additional increase to our insurance costs as well to reflect the updated invoice. Finally, with contract services, this is a non-departmental division essentially in the adopted budget. And we've got three changes going on here, that net out to a negative, or to a net reduction of $150,000. The actual reduction is $200,000. And that's associated with a need to delay the CIP assessment to fiscal year 2223 due to the retirement of the city engineer and staffing transitions. That remains a high priority for us and for the public works director. But it's, it's not feasible to complete that in the remainder of the current fiscal year. So we're recommending reducing the budget by that amount in 2122. And then we would bring back that budget for the assessment as part of the 2223 budget. We're then recommending increases to contract services budgets to fund the state lobbyist contract, which already came before city council, and to begin a class and comp study in the HR realm, which is something that is overdue for the city. And we would budget the remainder of those costs in 2223. So in sum, that is about $1.1 million in expenditure increases that we're recommending in the general fund. Those would be fully offset by the revenue budget increase recommendations, which as I mentioned, are still relatively conservative. So the net impact is actually a positive to the, to the projected year-end status of the general fund. The adopted budget had a projected operating surplus of $85,000. And if council directs staff to implement these manure changes as recommended, that would add an additional operating surplus projected of $80,000 for a total projected general fund operating surplus of $165,000 for the current fiscal year. And the next fund is the Measure Q and E fund. We're seeing similar trends here on the revenue side. Before I jump into details, I just want to call your attention to this. This was in here for CFAC, and if we need to reference it for any reason, these are the four priority expenditure areas that council directed funds to be expended out of Measure Q and E for 2122, addressing the priorities of Measures Q and E. At mid-year, we had received 43% of budgeted revenues already for Measure Q and E. And that might sound like it's under the target, but it's actually only for four of the 12 months of revenue. So it's actually trending really high. On the expenditure side, excluding encumbrances, we've expended about 18% of the budgeted funds. And that's really low because there are about $2 million of pending inter-fund transfers in the Measure Q and E fund, and those entries have, had not yet been made yet as of December 31st. So those are transfers to the general fund emergency reserve, there are transfers out to CIPs, et cetera. So we still do plan to expend those funds. On the revenue side, again, in coordination with HDL, we're recommending roughly 50% of what they think we might see by the end of the fiscal year, and that's $500,000. So the amended revenue budget, if we, if council directs us to increase this, would be approximately $3.9 million, and that's for the entire fund. And then on the expenditure side, we are recommending expending the majority of that $500,000. But as you'll note, if I kind of start from the bottom here, the majority is recommended to be an inter-fund transfer from Q and E to the general fund emergency reserve, consistent with council's policy from June, trying to get closer to that 50% target. Some of the other items here go back to the top of the list, and the police departments, these should have likely been included in the adopted 2122 budget. And were not, so we are reinstating them. They were previously in the Measure Q and E fund budget. And so they're recommended to be added back for the current fiscal year. And then the RMS, the records management system, came before you at your July 25th meeting. And as you heard, that is going to cost more than staff anticipated. So council directed us to increase that budget by about $65,000. There are some recommended staffing changes in Measure Q and E as well. And I will just go over the financial impacts of those. You may recall that there was $175,000 budgeted in Q and E for CIP implementation, and that was to be determined by the incoming public works director, if that would be through staff or consultant services or some combination thereof. We did come to you in September requesting the addition of a senior engineer position to implement CIPs. We did a recruitment for that, and were unsuccessful in attracting a candidate for that job spec. So as a result, we are recommending a creating an associate engineer position for capital projects that could be an internal recruitment and would have a slightly lower cost. And so we, for the current fiscal year, would be able to reduce the $175,000 for consultant services by $100,000. And so we would end up with a net savings essentially for CIP implementation for 2122. And part of that's because it, it has taken us some time to try to fill this role and assess how to best manage these projects. So that's the recommendation there. On the maintenance side, we are recommending that the previous maintenance superintendent position be reinstated. And doing so would cost about $35,000 for the remainder of the current fiscal year. So if both of the, if all of these changes are implemented, the revenue increase fully covers the expenditure increase. And you may recall that we had, I think, a former chair, Martin, communicated that we had some remaining fund balance from fiscal year 2021. That would remain in fund balance and available to appropriate in 2223. So these mid-year changes wouldn't be dipping into that. I'll keep going quickly through the enterprise funds. The first one is the harbor fund. The harbor fund ended 2021 with an operating surplus of about six, sorry, .6 million, which is really positive. It improved the, the fund's overall position significantly, although there is still a negative fund balance overall, primarily due to long-term liabilities, largely related to pension costs. The mid-year budget status is, things are on track for the harbor. And CIP work is partially resuming, as, as we know, there's a backlog of needs that remains. And just a reminder, this was also here for CFAC, that Measure Q and E is contributing $251,000 to harbor fund-related operations for the current fiscal year. The amendments that we're recommending in the harbor funds, I'm going to draw your attention to the, the blue box first because there are four separate enterprise funds for our harbor fund and all of our enterprise funds. That is something that we're looking at from a policy standpoint, trying to consolidate because we have a lot of transfers, and Gatsby doesn't require us to have that many different funds for each enterprise. And I mentioned that here because when you look at your resolution and your attachment, there are a number of lines that are just required transfers that we need council approval to complete because they're still considered part of the fund total. So what I've shown here on this slide is just the non-transfer items. And so you're looking at approximately, approximately .1 million in expenditure increases net. And the adopted budget had already budgeted a projected operating surplus of approximately .1 million. And so we're not really anticipating any significant change to the harbor fund, the harbor, the four harbor funds, you're in position with these changes. We can certainly go into more detail about these specific changes if you would like. But I will leave it now for Q and A. The water fund also performing well, not yet at 50% on the expenditure side, also because of the inter-fund transfers that need to be booked, but, but otherwise trending as expected. And the mid-year changes here, one change primarily is requesting a budget increase for the nutmeg pressure zone CIP project, that's one of the One Water projects. That's not due to an overall project budget increase, it's due to accelerating the timing from the adopted budget. So when the 2122 budget was adopted, CIP costs were pushed out to 2223, assuming that there would be significant pandemic impacts. However, we do have the fund capacity to continue to work on this project and recommend that we do so during the current fiscal year. There are minor increases with, related to the same item that I mentioned in the general fund for city health bank increases, but it's quite nominal. Very similar story on the sewer fund side, in terms of revenue collections and expenditures. And then the two changes here recommended at mid-year are for the wastewater collections projects at Main Street and Atascadero Road and at Beachcomber. Similarly here, the budgets were pushed out to 2223, but staff is able to deliver on those projects this year. So these are the changes that are recommended. And the sewer fund balances can accommodate these increases this year. Oops, I apologize, I think I have one more slide quickly to wrap up the mid-year portion of the presentation. The transit fund, we were able to receive some additional CARES Act money that we're budgeting on the revenue side, and only a $7,000 increase on the expenditure side. Some of that is inflation-related. The wayfinding project was another item that came before council at a previous meeting. This is to implement that budget change as directed. And then the affordable housing in Lou Fund. There are $75,000 in the adopted budget, budgeted for a contribution to the 405 Atascadero Road Affordable Housing Project. But count, prior council action approved $150,000 loan to that project. And so this is budgeting the remaining $75,000. ARPA, we're not recommending any changes to ARPA expenditures in, at mid-year. And that is because, very fortunately, the final rule came out in, just in January, and identified that we, like many small municipalities, can, are eligible to use our full allotment, which is roughly 2.5 million for general government services. So we are reassessing that, but there's no need to make any immediate changes to what council already adopted as part of the 2122 budget, which is great news. And we will continue to try to expend those dollars as council intended. I will pause and either turn it over to Dana Swanson or pause for questions on that section.
What's your pleasure, council members? Would you like to see the full presentation and ask questions? Or would you like to ask questions on this portion now? Councilmember Heller. You're muted.
I'd like to ask questions now.
Yeah, sure.
I don't have a lot. Sarah, can you tell me what ARPA final rule is?
My apologies, I, I hope I spotted out in the staff report. It is the American Rescue Plan Act funding, and that is the COVID-19 relief funding for local governments.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have, thanks.
Great. Any other questions at this point? Okay, hearing done. Sarah, thank you for that, and I assume, are you turning it over to Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
All right. Take it away.
We didn't coordinate our, our slide sharing, so if you'd like me to advance the slides for you, Dana, I could do that. I'll let you know, thank you, Sarah. I was trying to figure out how to unmute myself while, while you were sharing your screen, so thank you. So next screen, please, next slide. So the city has, you know, experienced reduced staffing a couple of times, significant reductions a couple of times in the last decade. We've lost six and a half positions in 2010 and another six during the pandemic. So this continued economic recovery provides an opportunity to evaluate, adjust, and gradually restore some of those key positions. In public works, to increase the capacity to enhance cleanliness and safety of public spaces, staff is recommending that we restore the maintenance superintendent position, which was defunded during the pandemic. Again, that will come out of the Measure Q and E fund. And then the next three are new job classifications for the utilities division. These are not added FTEs, they were either already approved or they're existing employees that are being reclassified. The first is a work operations technology specialist. That FTE has already been approved, and an existing employee will be promoted to that position. And then we're asking that you approve a new job classification for the utility support coordinator that would bring alignment to the employees' existing or assigned job duties. The last is a temporary operations interface manager classification. And we would reassign the current utilities division manager, Mr. Mueller, to that part-time position. It's point, 23 hours per week basically, to manage and coordinate various work startup activities. After I mentioned, the senior civil engineer position remains unfilled and unbudgeted. So we're suggesting that FTE be reduced. And then the last change in public works would be to restore the maintenance lead worker classification on the salary schedule. There's no change in FTE for that request. Next slide. In the admin and finance, to restore prior finance staffing, we're suggesting adding a fiscal analyst position. In part, this position will provide budgeted and financial reporting analysis and support from staff citywide, enabling departments to access, understand, and effectively manage their budgets and fiscal operations. And then to properly address increasing workloads, both in the clerk and human resources areas, we recommend bifurcating the city clerk and human resources responsibilities by approving a new job description for both classifications and authorizing the hiring of the city clerk. In recreation services, this is restoring the prior staffing levels by increasing our current recreation supervisor from 30 hours per week to full-time at 40 hours per week. Next slide, please. Adoption of these two resolutions would authorize an increased staffing in key service areas of 2.825 FTEs. A summary of the proposed changes are provided here, and then a full list we've added to the resolution adopting the amended salary schedules so that that can be documented for future reference. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dana. Any council questions with regard to the recommended staffing adjustments for Dana? Councilmember Heller, yes, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So Dana, in looking at this chart here for administration positions, you're identifying city clerk as a new position, and then it's a reclassification, current employee to human resources manager. Does this mean you're not our city manager anymore, or, I mean, our city clerk anymore? Or you're going to do human resources, or?
If approved, I would be reclassified as a human resources and risk manager, and we would hire a new city clerk.
Oh my gosh. That's not what I wanted to hear, but I'm sure there's a good reason behind it. What else? And this may not be something that, that you can answer, Dana, but... when I look at this, we obviously need the employees, and I have complete confidence in the work that you and Scott Collins and Sarah and other department heads do to staff the city adequately. I'm wondering, I keep thinking about the police department. And I call it the Morro Bay Police Training Academy with turnovers of 10, 10 personnel over the last two years. They come in and they're and they get training here and then they leave because they're so underpaid relative to other police departments in the area. Has this whole decision in terms of restaffing and reorganizing administration structure been addressed in the context of how we're going to help our police get paid on par with other agencies? It's probably a Scott Collins question.
Yes, Councilmember Heller, to answer your question, we, you know, and it's discussed, I guess, in more in the context of the five-year forecast, which is comes after this section. But it's a pertinent one. And I guess the way I would sort of rephrase the question, hopefully, this is what you're getting at is, you know, would making these moves force all the ability to address compensation concerns with, you know, with the police department? And I don't know if that's what you're getting at, but you know, that's how we looked at it. And it wouldn't undercut our ability to do that. So hopefully, that's what you were looking for.
That's what I was looking at. Thank you for sorting through my.
No, it's okay. No, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, that's that's what I'm wondering about. And the other concern I have, I noticed in the staff report that the union negotiations, the agreements expire the end of June this year. And we haven't budgeted, I don't think, for cost of living increases. And so I assume that's been taken into effect as well.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't want to put out in our numbers without having gone through the through the actually gone through the negotiation process. So but again, we sort of looked at the five-year and understand sort of what where the market's at, and we feel confident that we could come to a good agreement between us and the unions. But again, we need to go through that process. And so I feel pretty good about where we are financially to to address those issues.
Okay. And then I think is this is this look, is this mid-year budget conservative enough to accommodate a possible decrease in in visitors? There's some members of the community that think that this was kind of a one-off response to the pandemic that we had so many people visiting. And now that the pandemic has receded a bit, we may not have as many people. Was that, did you ever have that discussion internally?
Yes, absolutely. I meet with the executive director for Visit Morro Bay, which, you know, is a nonprofit that took over tourism marketing late last year. And this is what we talk about almost every week. And, you know, Sarah worked with Michael, his name, Michael Wamboldt. And he actually had us bring that number back from where we originally were. In other words, we thought TOT, we should raise that number even more so than we did. And he said we should hedge a little bit just in case there is a decline in visitorship coming up. So we took that position into account. We're probably being overly conservative, but we are concerned that could could occur. So that's the numbers reflect somewhat of a decline in visitorship.
Okay.
Yeah.
So those are my questions. Dana Swanson, Sarah, Scott, thank you so much for all your work on this. And those are my questions. Thank you all.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Looking for any other questions? Seeing that, I have just a couple of questions. Dana, can you tell me how many FTEs the city and enterprise funds totaled in the fiscal year 2011, 2012?
Yes, I can. It was 94 at that time. Was the high was 107 in 2009, 10.
You, yeah. And so what I have in 2011, 2012, including city council, was 101.75 FTEs. I'm looking at the tenure for the ACFIR, basically. And and what you're saying now is you're going to end up a total citywide now with 102.9 FTEs.
Not including council, correct.
And so has the complexity of managing and operating this city increased significantly over those 10 years?
Absolutely.
Isn't it interesting that the number of FTEs basically has remained the same? No further questions?
That wasn't a question.
I know. I'm saying I was done. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll jump into the the third and final part of the presentation, which is the general fund forecast.
Thank you, Sarah.
Uh huh. And this first slide is going to look like a lot on the screen, but it's cut in primarily here for reference in case we need to come back to it. And I'm going to walk you through bits and pieces of it. So the starting balance, I did go go back and ensure that this was recalibrated and tied to the general ledger and consistent with GASB requirements about expendable fund balance, et cetera. So the starting fund balance is a little bit different than what you saw in the prior version of the forecast. And it's about 0.7 million. And then these are unaudited numbers. But at the time that the staff report was written, the operating surplus for 2021 for the general fund looks to be about 2.45 million, which was excellent and even higher than anticipated with that mid-year budget adjustment. So that was due to, you know, the city had significantly reduced expenditures, both personnel and otherwise, due to the onset of the pandemic. So there were significant savings from doing so. And then the revenues were impacted primarily in the beginning of 2021, but they did rebound significantly by the end of 2021. So so that's the operating surplus from 2021, which is built into the running total that you'll see in a moment. The forecast going forward reflects restored services and restored revenues, although it doesn't reflect, you know, exponential growth in revenues like we've seen during this recovery period. So we'll start with the revenue forecasts. And as I mentioned, you know, most are projecting that revenue growth will level off starting next year and fiscal year 2223. So all of these revenue assumptions incorporate those those that projection. And I did work with the county on property tax projections, with HDL on sales tax projections, and with Visit Morro Bay on TOT projections. And we came up with these revenue assumptions here on the screen. So you can see overall, I mean, we're looking at a relatively modest growth in the five-year forecast period. And we think that these are, you know, reasonable, relatively conservative, not overly conservative. And they reflect the best knowledge that we have now, although, of course, they'll be updated at least annually going forward. For other revenues, that addresses some of the other categories that we talked about with the mid-year forecast, charges for service, et cetera. And we're using 3% for those which reflects, you know, for example, our CPI increase to our master fee schedule for those types of revenues, but perhaps other revenues that will be more flat. So on average, 3% for other revenue sources. I did want to mention that while we don't have a specific five-year forecast for it, at least this year, Measure Q and E Fund revenues are approximately $4 million. They're projected to be approximately $4 million in 2223. So that is, you know, obviously in addition to the general fund revenues. And so that's reflective of significant recent sales tax growth as well. And it's going to be part of the the conversation during the budget cycle about fiscal sustainability and how to prioritize among key expenditure areas. So those assumptions result in the following revenue projections. I did include 2021 actuals here. And so you can just see over time the gradual growth in revenues through the five-year forecast period, increasing from 16.5 million in 2021 to 19.7 million in 2027. On the expenditure side, to Councilmember Heller's question, this is a baseline forecast, which is consistent with with the city's practice and with most cities' practices for forecasting. So there's not built-in employee compensation increases. There are built-in merit step increases. So as you know, the city's salary schedule has five steps for each position. And so we are building in anticipated merit increases, but not across-the-board cost of living increases at this time. This does incorporate the positions that we're recommending be added at mid-year, those that are in the general fund. But it does not yet include any additional staffing level changes beyond those positions. Expenditures are, you know, in some areas at least, continuing to increase faster than revenues. We are still seeing a balanced forecast, though, for the five-year, five-year period. And one area that we'll want to discuss in more detail in the budget cycle is our CIP contribution. So I mentioned it was 6% for the current fiscal year. That that's likely not sufficient to meet, you know, citywide needs. And that's what we'll find out more about when we do the CIP assessment next year. So in terms of getting into the assumptions that were used on the expenditure side, the regular, the salaries assumption right now is 2%. Again, that's for merit increases, not for cost of living adjustments yet on top of that. The part-time and overtime are similar. And so we've looked at those more specifically. I've also built into the forecast, we will likely budget a portion of the mutual aid revenues and a portion of overtime going forward. And in the past, the city has kind of waited to see what would happen during the fire season and if we were going to get anything. But we know from, you know, several years of actuals that we are consistently called upon now to respond to mutual aid incidents. And so we'll likely be building that in at some level, probably not 100% of recent year actuals, but at some level going forward. And that's incorporated here. Let's see, the employer-paid benefits. So this is an average increase of 5% annually. And that would be to cover the city's contribution to health insurance premiums, unemployment, and some of the other smaller benefit contributions, deferred comp contributions, et cetera. The pension numbers are quite interesting during this forecast period. And I think in prior year forecasts, there was like the same number used for each of the five years. And so we've gotten the benefit of having a little bit better data, both from CalPERS and CalPERS' Pension Outlook Tool and our recent conversation with NHA advisors. And so we've gotten a little bit more nuanced pension forecasts. So the normal costs, as you might recall, are impacted by CalPERS' what they call their discount rate or projected rate of return, which they have just reduced further to 6.8%. That is going to take effect in 2324. So there's about a two-year lag in CalPERS' actuarial reports and when our payments actually come due. So that's the 12 and 1/2% increase that you see in fiscal year 24 is reflecting that 6.8% discount rate. If CalPERS were to make additional reductions in their discount rate, which some say is possible, then out years would would increase more than that 0 to 0.8%. And so we would need to update that if there were any, you know, concrete direction from CalPERS. But at this time, there's not. And at this time, their Pension Outlook Tool is is showing what's reflected on the screen. So we're going with that with those for this year's forecast. And then the unfunded liability portion is a bit, the timing of the impact on that is a bit different. So the positive returns that CalPERS achieved won't, they will offset the impacts of the lower discount rate, but we won't see the benefit of that to our unfunded liability payment until fiscal year 2324. So in the 2223 budget, our required UAL payment will still increase by also about 12 and 1/2% on average citywide. And then that will start to actually decline. Again, that's also based on the 6.8% rate of return at this point. And so we will obviously update these at least annually going forward. But it is a bit of a, you know, an overall increase in the in the upcoming two years and then flattens out in the three out years. Other supplies and expenses, we are assuming a 5% escalator to try to address CPI. And honestly, you know, there might be some one-time expenditures associated with some of council goals or other high-priority projects. And so not every single line item will increase by 5%. And it might look more like, you know, 6% in 2223 and then taper off as inflation stabilizes. But our average projection is 5% a year. So what that results in, I apologize, the the I just noticed the years were cut off here. So this starts with fiscal year 2021 actuals and then goes all the way out to 2027, being the final year. I did want to point out that we've got operating expenditures here and then the net operating surplus or deficit. And I've separated out capital expenditures because the calculation for the reserve is based on these operating expenditures, not including the one-time capital expenditures. But I think, as I mentioned, that will be part of the conversation for council going forward. We're we're looking at operating surplus during the five-year period. And then also in need to invest probably more, you know, going forward in in CIPs. So right now, this has us trying to invest, you know, roughly a half a million dollars a year in general fund dollars to capital projects. And that is, I think, a question mark that we want to continue to discuss with council as the budget cycle continues. So if you recall, the revenue number in in 2027 was 19.7 million. Expenditure number is 19.6 million. We're still just barely showing a, you know, balanced fund forecast in the five-year period. And then the fund balance, the general fund balance and the general fund emergency reserve balance, I'll show you next. Just as a reminder, council's updated policy from June 2021 increased both the minimum and the target reserve levels. Minimum reserve level is 33% of operating expenditures and the target is 50%. The policy asks us to include Measure Q and E Fund operating expenditures in that calculation because they do represent a significant portion of the city's ongoing operating expenditures or a a portion. And then the pension reserve policy, we have not forgotten about that. A council did request that staff come back. I'm targeting April at this point with a pension reserve policy that can be, can hopefully fit within the broader context of the general fund emergency reserve policy. And going forward, we'll need to figure out how to balance investment and ongoing operating expenditures as well as CIP and pensions. So what that results in is you can see up here the change in fund balance and then the ending general fund balance in each fiscal year. Then the ending emergency reserve fund balance and the Measure Q and E operate, operating costs as projected, which get included in the calculation of the general fund emergency reserve. So this, we'll use fiscal year 2021 as an example, 5.6 million takes the sum of the general fund balance and the emergency reserve balance and divides that by the operating expenditures in the general fund and Q and E fund. And we are at about 40%, again, unaudited numbers, but at about 40%. We are budgeted for significant transfers into the general fund emergency reserve in the current fiscal year. And we've actually just are recommending increasing those. This 1.9 million dollar number includes the increase recommended at mid-year. So that would get us up to about 43.7% at the end of the current fiscal year, if things go as projected. And then you can see we're kind of hovering around that general range of 40% for the forecast period. So exceeding the minimum, but not not yet at the target. And we'll, that'll be part of the conversation, I think, when we come back and talk about pensions. And we'll, that'll be part of the conversation, I think, when we come back and talk about pension reserve policy as well. In conclusion, so it's a lot of info, information on this slide, sorry. But the chart at the bottom, I think, is really for us to start considering, for council to start considering and, and leading up to the budget cycle, you know, how to balance, as I mentioned, ongoing operating needs and, you know, inflation, wage pressure, costs continuing to rise faster than, than revenues. With capital needs, you know, we've got a deferred backlog. There's probably some financing options available to us that we will look into. And then also balance that with pension liability and trying to do more than make the minimum payment so that we can mitigate some of the unpredictability that has come with CalPERS pension liability. So overall, we're in a much improved place from when you saw this forecast last year. There have been significant improvements, really great economic recovery so far from the pandemic. A lot of remaining uncertainty on the horizon. So we're trying to have a relatively conservative forecast still at this point. Obviously, Measure E provides significant, you know, support for fiscal sustainability and some options, you know, for council to consider to ensure that the community's priorities around Measure Q and E funds continue to be met and those services continue to be delivered effectively. Next steps. This is a reminder of the budget calendar that you approved at a January meeting. So we'll be working internally, developing kind of baseline recommended budgets in March and April. Going to CFAC in April with the Q and E funding recommendations. Coming back to you most likely in late April with the review of that pension reserve policy and potentially any other fiscal policies that might need to be updated. And then if time permits, going back to CFAC in May, as has been done in past years, I believe. Also consistent with past years, looking at the, the last week in, in May for council's budget study sessions and then adoption in June. We're also looking forward to a new and improved digital format for our budget book this year and hope that that will provide information in an accessible and easy-to-read format for the public. So that leads us to our recommendations for this item, which, of which there are five. And so I will leave that before you and we can throw this back up if you need it. Otherwise, I can stop sharing and take any questions.
Sarah, thank you very much. And I'll just ask council members if there are any questions on this last section, which was the, the forecast, general fund forecast. Any questions for Sarah on that? Okay, great. Sarah, thank you so much. Scott and Dana, outstanding job, well-presented. Comprehensive, easy to understand after you read it 15 times. But thank you so much for the great presentation. We're going to go ahead and go out to public comment before we have council discussion. So public comment is now open for item C dash two. This is public comment for C dash two. And James, do we have any public comments, sir?
We have a hand raise from Betty Winholz.
Okay, welcome, Betty.
Thank you. It would help to understand some of the lingo that's used in the budget. And I've outlined some of those words and hope that you will define these for us. In particular, what a lockbox billing process is because that will affect us, I believe, the customer. And I'd like to know what growing internal customer service needs with that phrase means. You have combined Measure E and Measure Q. Is Measure Q going away? And what ordinance was that that allowed that to happen? What is the City Health Bank? I kind of gather from the conversation that maybe that's the city's contributions towards staff's health insurance, but could you make sure I'm interpreting that correctly? I was concerned about the loan to the housing development and what the strings attached were to that. I was wondering what the, whether these three positions were going to be paid for by the water and/or wastewater treatment plan. And that's the utility support coordinator, the operational technology specialist, and then the operations interface manager. Is that paid for by the WRF? I would, I couldn't see anywhere specifically how much money we're spending on paving other than the $350,000. Is that it? Or is that being contributed towards another sum? And then I was a little surprised about the all-city managers meeting for $10,000. That just seemed like a lot. And then just a couple of observations with regard to what I have observed in town that I don't believe that seagulls are overpopulated, as stated on page 11. They can no longer be found at the Bay Shore Bluff City Park because you've agreed to allow take of those eggs. The population at the shopping centers is certainly reduced and you don't see maybe more than a half a dozen birds at one time. And you never see them hardly downtown anymore either. So for those seagulls to be down on the waterfront is like, duh, that's where they live, right? And so really that garbage issue and hiring more people for that is a human problem, I think. Let's not be blaming the birds for that. I would also like to say that street trees downtown have been maintained almost annually to the point where they do not flower twice a year as they have. There are fewer trees left in residential streets at this point because they've all matured and been cut. So my thing about spending so much for an arborist and tree control, it really should be more about replanting at this point. And then I, again, I, I have heard not just tonight, but other nights where the council goals are very aggressive. I would say more than just a lot, but, and that maybe you need to look at that this spring when you do that, not demanding so much of your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. James, for their public comment.
I see no raised hands, so you should be good.
Thank you. I'll close public comment, bring it back to council and Sarah, Scott and/or Dana. I took the, I think the major questions, one, define the lockbox billing, if you could, for us.
Sure. That's essentially a billing service that would be through the city's existing banking relationship with Mechanics Bank that would save staff time and reduce human error in terms of depositing utility bills. And Ms. Winholz is correct, we would be messaging that to ratepayers through their bills. And I think something's going to go out in the city managers' update about that as well.
Okay. And let's see, is Measure Q going away? Have we combined Measure Q and the, the new measure?
Sure, I see the city attorney. Would you like to take that one, Chris, or?
So this question has come up on Measure E versus Measure Q and the revenue is received from the state. So to be clear, both measures are still on the books with Moro Bay. Of course, when Measure E was passed, the way it was done, which is typical for cities, is that the ordinance that was currently on the, in the local code for Measure Q, that was amended to just make a flat 1.5% rate. My understanding is that the state is sending revenues to the city under the new ordinance. But neither measure has gone away. The city, if they had done two ordinances, would be paying double the administrative fees to the state. That's just the way it works. And so most cities have one ordinance. But, you know, if a city had 10 different sales taxes, they could have 10 different ordinances and pay 10 times the fees. But no, it has not gone away. And when the city receives the money, the city does know that some of it's from Measure E and some of it's from Measure Q.
Thank you, Chris. And the City Health Bank, just, if you could define that for Mrs. Winholz.
Sure. And I, I did just want to clarify one thing. When we receive the funding from CDTFA, it is, it is coming to us as, as technically Measure E funding because of the way that the ordinance was written. But we are spending all of that on the four priorities that were part of the presentation in the staff report tonight, which were council's priorities to address the ballot language in both Measure Q and E. So no changes to how those funds are being expended. Just, you know, perhaps a labeling question in terms of how we receive those from CDTFA. And absolutely, the City Health Bank is a monthly flat amount that the city contributes as a portion of the health insurance premium costs on behalf of city employees. They have options on what level of health insurance to purchase and they make up the difference.
And can you tell us what positions are being funded out of or by the water and sewer fund?
Yes. So the utility support coordinator, the operational technology specialist are both being funded from water and sewer funds. The operations, I want to make sure I'm getting this straight and I would invite Dana, there, I see Greg. The part-time position is through the wharf.
Yes, that's all correct.
Okay, great. And do we know how many, how much paving dollars were spent this year, year-to-date?
So far, we haven't spent too many because it's still in design. But we are anticipating a project of around $1.1 million. I think what Ms. Winholz was referring to in the report was about an additional $350,000 transfer for that project. And if that's not spent for this project, then it'll carry over, if approved by council, to the next pavement project that would be started in the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Great, thank you, Greg. And the all-city managers meeting for $10,000. The question was, what is that? Maybe Scott's with us and?
Yeah, that's an estimate on the costs. But the event is, is to have all the city managers beyond that, also the county and lead county staff on regional issues like homelessness and housing and infrastructure, as well as Reach, who's our county-wide kind of coordination on economic development and Visit Slocow, which is a tourism connecting all, all the county and, and talking about how we work together as a region. Because a lot of the problems such as housing and homelessness don't honor jurisdictional boundaries, whether we like that or not. So we need to work together as a region more cohesively on those. And so that is the intent is to bring the, those folks together to try to help solve some of these issues and also talk about how we work better together.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate that. And thank you, Ms. Winholz, for the, those questions. Bringing it back to council now, we have a recommendation before us. I'll just give a quick summary in, in my opinion. First, again, you know, I can't say thanks enough to staff for all the great work that you've done. I know when we get reports like this, they're comprehensive and, and, but I also know the significant amount of time and effort that it takes to get these and to get them right. And I really appreciate it. I like the new revised format. It's a simple format for estimating, you know, our general fund in the future. And really appreciate that. Thanks for the significant detail on additional FTEs. That was very helpful in, in understanding operationally where you're going and, and what's happening. What I see is a budget that at the mid-year is really much better than we anticipated, given the pandemic. Two years ago, when we did our forecast and even a year ago, it was dismal in terms of the impacts on the general fund and our enterprise funds. This is much improved. And I, I just want to call out Councilmember Heller's question. I think it's a good question regarding, you know, is this sustainable? And what I see is that you've really taken a good look at TOT and sales tax and you've reined that in. One could, could make the assumption based upon this first half that we should be anticipating much more revenue in the second half of the year. But for those two major revenue sources, that total over 50% of our revenues, you've really, you know, pulled that back. And I, I think that's a good conservative approach that deals with the issue. It's exciting to see the impact that our community has made with the two sales tax measures that were passed. I want to thank our community members that voted for those two initiatives. You can see the significant impact on the city in terms of public safety and all of the other areas that, that those funds encompass. And I'm very grateful for $4 million that additionally has come to the city as a result of that. I'm excited for our future. However, I also note that we are really significantly challenged in meeting the future capital needs of the city. That remains the biggest issue. We've not done significant allocations for capital funding. We are entering a time next year where we're, we're going to evaluate that on a citywide basis and for all of the enterprise funds. But for the most part, that remains to be an expenditure that we really haven't significantly allocated. Very excited about our general fund emergency reserve. Things are changing dramatically with regard to anticipated returns, not only in the stock market, but with the major global issues that are going on, things could change rather dramatically. And there could be a fairly significant downturn in the next year or two. And it's good to be in a position where we have raised our emergency reserve percentage. And that fund is being depleted and looks, looks very healthy. So I'm going to be supporting the staff recommendation. Those are my comments. And again, thank you so much, staff, for all of your hard work that you continue to do for the city. And I'll take other comments. Or, yes, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, it was such an amazing report. Thank you both to Ms. Johnson-Rios and Ms. Swanson. Yes, I am, I am sad that she will be leaving the city clerk's position as well, Councilmember Heller. But I am excited that she will have more time to concentrate on the other position. And as she's, you know, she's done such an amazing job doing so many, so many things for our city and, and never complains about it. So just, just an amazing person. What I want to say about the budget is I think it's great that we're being as conservative as we are looking forward, you know, the TOT and sales tax and whatnot. I know, because, you know, I've been attending the Visit Moro Bay meetings. I know they're working really extremely hard to, to, you know, not see as big of a dive as what we might, you know, possibly see. Because like we said, the endemic, I guess, is what you coined or what you said earlier, Mayor. But they're working just so hard to make sure that we hopefully don't see the possible drop in, in, in the TOT that could possibly happen if they weren't working so hard. So, and along with our chamber, you know, working tirelessly. And so our, our, we're lucky as a city because we have such great organizations and boards that are doing good work. So, yeah, I, I am right with you there, Mayor. I think that, I feel good going along with the staff's recommendations as well. The staff report was so well-done. I don't have any further questions, or I don't have any questions, I should say. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. I appreciate that. Forgot to thank CFAC as well for their review and work as one of the boards that obviously reviewed this in detail. Councilmember Heller, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo your comments. It's, it's an outstanding report. We're extremely fortunate to have the staff that we have. And I, I think you've always have to look closely when you add staff. But I think managing this city is so different from what it was even five years ago with what's happening in the world and what the demands are on a city, particularly us with the bay and harbor that is such a precious resource, with the proposed battery storage plant, with offshore wind. All these are the things that are happening around us and near us that impact us, that we're involved in. Managing this city is a, is a challenge. And I think Scott Collins has, has upped his game and brought in outstanding people and has reorganized the staff in a way that will and has reorganized the staff in a way that will take us into the future. So I want to thank you. Thank you all for that. The other comment that I think we can't forget, one of the reasons we're in the position we're in is the act that, the acts that our representatives in Washington took to basically replenish our general fund emergency reserve funds. I don't want to forget that, that we got almost a million dollars this year and we'll be getting another million next year. I don't know where, where the city would be if the federal government had not acted in that way when they did act. And I want to make sure that people remember that. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Heller, for remembering our federal government as well for assisting us. Councilmember Addis, please.
I also will support this item, Mayor. I heard your comments at the beginning and just want to say what a celebration this is. After years of being in the other place, and I actually look forward now to these presentations where I used to really dread them because I knew we were going to walk away feeling like we weren't where we need to be. And there's always more work to do. There will always be more improvement to make. But I want to compliment staff for their foresight. Compliment this council for the foresight in consistently trying to move economic development forward, trying to move our budget into a good place. And I feel like we're on the front end of that now. So I would support all parts of the recommendation this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Any further comments? Okay, I will go ahead and move that we received the fiscal year '21-'22 mid-year budget report. Number two, that we adopt resolution number 17-22 authorizing the attached staff report budget amendments. And that we, number three, adopt resolution number 18-22 approving new classifications and job descriptions. And number four, adopt resolution number 19-22 approving the revised salary schedule and authorized full-time equivalent staffing list. And number five, receive the annual general fund forecast. And we've provided the input that has been received.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Heading for the staff recommendation, second by Councilmember Heller. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great, thank you. That takes us to item C-3. This is adoption of resolution number 20-22, declaring a climate emergency in Morro Bay. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins, please.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I have a brief presentation largely just kind of summarizing the staff report here and turning it over to council for any questions. But as the mayor identified, the recommendation is to adopt resolution number 20-22, declaring a climate emergency in Morro Bay. The background on this, I mean, it's no surprise, should be, comes as no surprise to our community and council that climate change, while it used to be sort of a theoretical concept, is now real. We're experiencing it with, you know, more prolonged wildfire seasons, the prolonged drought that we're currently experiencing, and rising seas and other extreme weather patterns that it's, it's actually here now on our doorstep. Climate change is a grave concern, and so much so that the city's general plan that was adopted by council and approved by the Coastal Commission, the framework includes a climate resiliency. It's like the fundamental driver for that plan and just thinking ahead about how sea level rise and the other impacts identified will, will, will play out in our community and how to plan for those eventualities. Further, city council included for the first time as a city goal, or at least in recent times, climate action as a, as a major goal for the city to pursue. The goal statement that was adopted by council said that we participate with other cities in Sow County to support climate action planning efforts, educate the council on the technical terms around climate change and climate action, and to support policy advocacy and identification of that critical next steps in Morro Bay and consider opportunities to reduce reliance on carbon-producing energy sources. So coming on the heels of that goal identification and adoption of the Morro Bay general plan, council also expressed an interest in declaring this climate emergency, really to kind of send alarm bells, if you will, in the, the community that this is something that is of resounding importance. And giving it that, that name kind of takes it beyond just sort of, oh, let's just do what we can to like, let's really invest in making changes now, both at the government level and the individual level. So we, we took that direction and produced the attached resolution to the staff report. Thankfully, we weren't the first to do this, though there's certainly a lot, lot other communities that are considering this and they want to go in this direction. So there were other formats to look at, particularly coastal communities. And so we, we kind of use those as, as a guidance, but wanted to make sure that the resolution does reflect our community values and the things that we actually have control over. So we, we embedded in that, that thought about the things that are coming forward to council, including, as was identified by Councilmember Heller, offshore wind in the previous item and, and the battery storage project potentially. So those larger, larger scale projects, but also some of the minor or more day-to-day things that, you know, we control at the local level, like electric vehicle charging stations and Senate Bill 1383 implementation to help reduce organic waste disposals into our trash streams. And then also to find out, figure out ways to help educate our community and get them involved and participate in reducing their carbon footprint on a personal level and as well as our local business community. So with all that in mind, the resolution affirms the city's commitment to proceed with a sense of urgency, like I said, and carrying out these initiatives to, to really think about how we can, as a city organization, reduce our carbon emissions and participate kind of in, I guess, in an advocacy stance with our partner agencies at the state, local, regional, and federal levels to really help drive action. So with that, the staff recommends adoption of resolution number 2022, declaring a climate emergency in Morro Bay. And I want to thank Community Development Director Scott Graham for helping put this staff report together. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that very much. And especially appreciate how you translated our goal into a meaningful resolution. That's kind of a work of art, in my opinion. Let me open it up to council questions, please, for Mr. Collins. Any questions? Seeing Councilmember Heller. Sir, please.
Does he have questions?
Sure.
So my question about this resolution, when I read it, is it sounds like a lot of work for staff, particularly with respect to working with other cities in the county to support planning efforts and so forth. What's your, what's your take on that, Scott Collins?
It's a astute observation. I think if we wanted to take our efforts to another level, it would require more of our time to be put into those buckets. We do have regional planning efforts that have been ongoing, as Scott Graham can speak to. And we also have, thankfully have, I didn't mention it in the staff, pardon, in the oral presentation, but we have the, the JPA we're a part of, where our energy is procured on our behalf, green energy is procured on our community's behalf. And they have grant programs and other things that do, can kind of do a lot of this work for us, but it still would require investment of my time, Scott Graham's time, and others to, to take advantage of those opportunities. So I think that's a fair observation that we, we need to spend more time to, to see these things through.
Okay, that, that's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Other questions for either Mr. Graham or Mr. Collins? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item 2-3 on our agenda this evening. A public comment is now open. And James, do we have any public comments, sir?
We have a hand raised from Betty Winholz.
Welcome back, Betty.
Thank you. My final comment this evening, and thanks for the topics this evening. I just want to encourage, I think, staff as much as city council to be better role models in this area, rather than just do paperwork. And I'm referring specifically to how you're doing your goals and have done goals in the past. I outlined in my email to you how I believe the sewer plant is anything but environmentally friendly. The whole idea that we put in electrical outlets, but we don't provide electrical vehicles to our staff, that kind of a contradiction that we support our monarchs and our bees, but we continue to use pesticides in our parks and around our buildings, that we don't honor the urban forest management plan. And I don't know that if any of you have even ever read it. So I think there are things that can be done and that we just need to pay attention to those things and be a little bit more sincere, rather than just give lip service. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty, for those comments. James, next public comment?
See no hands raised, so you should be good to go.
All right, sir, thank you. I'll close public comment. Bring it back to council for discussion or entertain a motion. Any...
I'll move to approve this item.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Addis to approve C-3 staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Barton, thank you. And any discussion, further discussion regarding the motion?
I'll ju, I just, I'll say thank you to staff for researching this and to council majority for agendizing it and getting it done so quickly. I do believe we're in a climate emergency, and I do believe that we can and should do more on this issue. I also see Morro Bay doing tremendous things and being a leader across the central coast in many of the ways that were outlined in the staff report. And I'm proud of that, and I want to see us keep moving down that road with urgency. And I, and I'm, I'm glad to see that we're going to be collaborating through those regional partnerships where we can, moving huge projects forward in our own city, and then looking for smaller, more immediate ways to take action. So I just want to say thank you to staff for the time and energy for putting this together and to council majority for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Heller?
Yeah, so I feel like we are in the forefront of, of climate issues with, with the power plant, the battery storage plant that's coming forward, EV stations as a possible community benefit, the fact that we have a bay and we work so hard to take care of it. I'm not sure, unless this resolution guarantees this additional funding that we might not other qualify for, I'm not sure what the purpose is. I, I think climate change is urgent. What that means for our city, however, I think is going to be very specific, related to sea level rise, related to greenhouse gas emissions. And to one of the commentators' points, why don't we have electric vehicles? We've done, we've taken very few steps in this direction, and to all of a sudden call it an emergency and make a proclamation, I don't quite understand the point. The work, the work is in front of us. There are things that we can do, and we have a certain amount of resources. And I assume that we would be pursuing them full force for the grants that we can get and, and doing whatever we can. I am very concerned about burdening our staff with, with more meetings, which they could probably attend if they wanted to. But this resolution, I'm, I'm concerned is we'll put them in a position where they'll get more involved with regional efforts, which is all well and good. But I think we know what we need to do here. We need to figure out ways to do it. So I don't, I don't support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo what Councilmember Addis said earlier in her comment. I would add that I think that doing something like designating a climate emergency kind of revisits and renews our commitment. You know, sometimes when we get going, you know, going along and, and doing all the things that we have to do as, as a city, and we have a lot, like has been stated before, we have a lot going on in the city. And so I think pausing for a moment and, and realizing, you know, we are a coastal community who will be affected much faster than, than our, our, you know, inland cities will be because of the climate change. I think it's important that we, we do make this commitment. And we move forward with the, with knowing, you know, as a council, we've decided that this is an emergency and that we do need to do whatever is we can to prepare. So if, you know, getting a fleet that is electrified, you know, things like that, and, you know, if this helps us move in that direction that much faster, then I'm willing to do whatever it is that we can do. Will it all happen tomorrow? No. As, as Councilmember Heller has stated, we, we do have limited staff time. Do I want it to take up all of our staff's time? Of course not. I, I do understand that they have other jobs to do as well. But I think that making a statement and saying, hey, we really truly have to work towards preparation for what we're facing as, as a city in the future, for future generations. I think it's important that we do it. And, and as stated by one of our commenters earlier in public comment, I think that it's, it's, maybe it will inspire us as well to work with other groups, such as Morro Bay and Bloom and other groups that were stated. If that inspires us to coordinate and to maybe take, alleviate some of that staff time and kind of, you know, maybe a couple of us councilmembers can get together with a subcommittee and, and take some of that stress off of our staff. I'm willing to have that conversation, and I think that maybe as a council, we can, we can discuss that further, maybe as a further along the line agenda item. But, but anyways, I'm getting a little off topic, but I, I think that, I think I support this because I think we have to be brave and we have to think big and we have to really do all that we can do. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. I'll be supporting the motion. I do believe that, in my mind, it, it affirms three things. One, it recognizes the science that is incontrovertible, that has demonstrated the fact that we are in crisis with regard to climate change, no doubt whatsoever in my mind. Number two, I do believe it raises awareness at the community level that this is important and that local actions can contribute significantly to implementing and initiating change that can have a positive impact to help avoid the further increase in the crisis. And lastly, I do believe locally by, by declaring this an emergency that, that soon there will be funding available for cities that have done this and have recognized this and have committed to it. And it will position us for receiving those funds. I do share the concern about allocating large numbers of resources. I don't think anybody here is advocating for that, at least in the short term. But for the reasons that I've stated, I do believe it needs to remain before us as a major goal and realizes those three areas that I, I just spoke of. So I'll be supporting the motion. Any, any further comments? Okay, if not, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Great, thank you for that discussion. Again, thank you, staff, for getting this on our agenda and the great staff report. Bring this to item D, council declaration of any future agenda items. Anything? Anything? Looking for any items? Seeing, okay, is that a hand up, Councilmember Ford?
Sorry.
There you go. Yes, please.
It was faster than finding the button.
Yeah.
You know, bringing up what I had said before, I don't know if if any other council members would be in support of this, but since we did just, the majority of us did just declare our city in a climate emergency, I think it is appropriate that we do form some sort of, you know, subcommittee with two councilmembers to, you know, to spearhead this or to help our staff, because I I really do worry about putting too much extra work on their, you know, on their, on them. And I and I think that, you know, since we we took it upon ourselves to declare this emergency, that we should do what we can to help. And so if other councilmembers would agree, I think that we should consider forming some sort of subcommittee to maybe figure out how we can reach out to our community to to help us and other other ways of helping our city combat this topic.
So may I, with your permission, frame it just a little bit differently?
Please, do.
Yeah, it's a future agenda item, so perhaps, and and correct me if if this isn't what you're getting at, perhaps the future agenda item is asking staff to bring back a recommendation for the formation of a council subcommittee of two to assist with this initiative. Is that?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Yes.
So we, because we can't take action to appoint that tonight, that's not.
No, no, as a future agenda item, yes.
Does that articulate it okay, Jen? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there support for that? I'm just looking for support for a council subcommittee that's the recommended, yeah, Councilmember Heller. You're you're muted.
Thank heavens. I support it.
You support it? Okay, good. All right. And do I see others? I'll support it as well.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, good. Looks like we have support. Thank you, Jen. Any other future agenda items? Hearing none, we will move on to item E, which is adjournment. Thank you for your work, staff, this evening. Thank you, councilmembers, for great discussion. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, March 8, 2022, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. Thank you so much. Have a great evening, be safe and be well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, Dana.